I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley. Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our next order of business is to go into closed session, and the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, matter pertaining to an individual's students, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And the next item on our agenda is our recognitions, our state award winners. Dr. Small.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce Eric Winkowski, the Director of Athletics and Activities. And Eric, please introduce us to some fine young athletes we have here today.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to recognize a team of student athletes that excelled this fall on the pitch. So, those of you who don't know, that's the soccer field. Athletes, as your coach introduces you, please walk towards the podium and get your medal. Additionally, any family members that are here, when your son is introduced, or your family member is introduced, please stand and be recognized with them also. Assistant me with the awards presentations tonight are Fremd Principal Mark Langer and Athletic Director David Dick. So, Steve Keller is a wellness teacher and a driver education teacher at Fremd High School for the last -- he deserves it. For the last 23 years, Steve has been both the head boys and girls soccer coach at Fremd High School, along with the team we're recognizing tonight, Fremd Soccer Teams have been very successful under Coach Keller. Steve's boys teams have placed third in state three times, and fourth in state twice, while his girls teams have been state runner-up twice and placed third once.
Thank you, Mr. Winkowski. I would like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Small, and the administration team for inviting the Fremd Boys Soccer Team here tonight to be recognized for their second-place state finish this past fall. The Fremd Soccer Program appreciates the board and administration's continued support of athletics in District 211. Without your dedication and guidance, none of our athletic accomplishments would be possible. I would also like to thank our Principal, Mark Langer, our Athletic Director, David Dick, and all of the support staff at Fremd for their help, guidance, and support. Finally, I would like to recognize the Fremd Soccer Coaching Staff. Gerardo Peanyani, Mike Winter, Matt Shriver, Nick Mamula, Chad Jonas, and Al Bochat have spent countless hours creating a learning environment on the soccer field that instills character, sportsmanship, work ethic, and leadership. It is greatly due to their mentoring that Fremd High School has a successful, talented, and respected soccer program. Fremd Soccer had a very successful season, posting a 21-3-1 record. Some of the team's accomplishments were winning the Hershey Regional, the Fremd Sectional, the Barrington Super Sectional, and then placing second in the state tournament. This group of student athletes proved that with intense preparation and focus, dreams do come true. I would like to now introduce the players and their parents. Please stand when your son is recognized. First, my assistant coach, Gerardo Peanyani. Our two managers, Luigi Di Agostaro. And now our players, Leo Akashi.
Patty Erdl, will you please come forward to the podium? The Illinois Business Educators Association Secondary Teacher of the Year annually recognizes a secondary school teacher who is providing significant contributions to the business education programs of Illinois. This year, the IBEA selected Conant High School Business Department Chair Patty Erdl as one of its two recipients for the state award. A graduate of Hoffman Estates High School, Patty was influenced by her teachers there and eventually worked side-by-side with them as an early educator. She has now been a teacher in District 211 for nearly 25 years and has taught at all five of our high schools. She currently serves as the district's Business Education Chair, a role she has held for more than 19 years. She holds a bachelor's degree in Business Administration and Management and Business Teaching Education from Illinois State University. She earned a master's in Educational Leadership and Administration from Benedictine University. Patty says she enjoys working with students because they make learning and teaching fun. She particularly loves teaching business because of how current the content is, with every day being different, and new opportunities to teach and help students learn. Patty is also a Conant High School instructional coach, working side-by-side with her colleagues to develop the most effective instructional practices, to utilize meaningful data analysis, and to encourage teacher improvement through collaboration and a shared goal of student improvement. Congratulations, Patty, and thank you for all you do across the district in business
Thank you, and congratulations to all who have been recognized this evening. Congratulations to our students. Thank you for your dedication to education and to your athletics. And congratulations to Ms. Erdl for receiving the recognition of the Business Educator, you know, of the year. Thank you so much for your dedication and all that you do, all the talent and time that you share with your students and with your peers. And thank you to all of our teachers for what you do for our students. And also, parents, thanks for everything that you do to support your children and to support our community. So with that, I thank you very much. At this point, we're going to continue with our meeting, the business portion. You are certainly welcome to stay, or if you would like to leave, you certainly can do that and probably go do some homework or something. All right, so thank you very much. Okay, so thank you. We will begin with our public comments, and next on our agenda is the public comments. The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, this board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or placement in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Tenepor. He's at the end there. We have nine people that have signed up to speak, so I will call the first name, and then I will also call the second name so you can be prepared. The first person speaking is Bob Lindeman.
Point of order, how much time do they have? Two minutes, three minutes, or five minutes?
Five. I said five, I'm sorry.
First of all, I want to thank the school board for allowing me to talk for a few minutes today. I am a resident of 211. I live in Schaumburg. I used to live in Palatine. I used to live in Hoffman Estates. I've had two children that successfully graduated from 211. One went to Purdue, one went to U of I, graduated honors. Interesting thing, they both started off in special ed, so I've been very happy with the education here. I'm here to talk about two issues. One is compensation. I understand contract negotiations have begun and will take place over the next couple months regarding the teacher's contract. As an owner and partner in a compensation and recruiting firm, I want to indicate that average wages that are projected by authoritative associations and experts are expected to be 3% for 2022, and that consists of professionals, managers, executives, primarily salaried personnel throughout the United States. Some of those range down to 2.8, some go up to 3.2, but that's what the average is. Now, what that excludes is hourly wages. We're seeing a lot of pressure on hourly wages, primarily because of the minimum wage laws, and a lot of these people are living hand-to-mouth. So you will see raises in the 3, 5, 6, 7, maybe even more, but those are typically people paid below $50,000 a year, and our teachers do not fall into that category. So I would encourage the board to keep those raises at the 3% level because that's what the private sector is reading. I would also say that in the last two years, the private sector experienced furloughs, lost wages, lost jobs in some cases, and took significant reductions in some situations. The teachers experienced no reduction in pay. I have no gripes against them. I'm just saying I hear rumors that they're asking for 5, 6, 7% increases that will not go over very well with the private sector, especially given the hardships that some of them continue to incur. So again, I am happy with the education. That's not the gripe. It's just that we have to be cognizant of the greater community here, and the board has a fiduciary responsibility. The other subject that I want to briefly cover with you, and by the way, I sent you this via email, including compensation data about a month ago. I will resend it tomorrow to all the board members. The other subject that I want to address very briefly is the subject of pension spiking. Some board members refer to this as board enhancements. Okay, those are the pay increases that school boards give in the last four years because compensation, excuse me, pension benefits are based upon average wages in the last four years. School District 211 and many other school districts have spiked the wages in the last four years to the tune of 6%, which is the maximum by law until a penalty is incurred. I see no reason to increase those wages more than 3% since school District 211 teachers are already at a very high level of compensation. They're at $130,000 to $170,000 before these adjustments, so there's no reason to enhance their pay. All that does is jeopardize an already broken pension system. Another reason is our property taxes, which are not driven by necessarily the pensions, but our property taxes have gone up two to two-and-a-half times the rate of inflation over the last 20 or 30 years. That's not sustainable. 70% of our tax bill is driven by teachers' compensation, and again, we need to watch that compensation. It needs to be market-driven, but the teachers in 211, if you do your analysis--
I have one minute remaining.
Okay, one minute. So, I have a longer document here that I'm going to share with the board and the superintendent. If you want to put it on your website, that's fine. I do encourage you to take my comments regarding pension spiking and pension enhancements very seriously. When you increase compensation by 6% in the last four years, that increases, depending on the teacher's salary, anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 per year for the remaining years of their life, including their spouses. That's a lot of money, and I think the teachers and the board needs to take that very seriously. They already have great benefits, they already have great retirement benefits before these enhancements, and I would encourage you to take a hard look at that practice. I know it's been common practice, and I just want to say one thing before I'm cut off. The unions and the administrators have told me in the past, "We have to give these incentives so teachers will retire." That's BS. Pardon the language.
Your speaking time has ended.
They will retire no matter what because otherwise they're working for 25 cents on the dollar. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jerry Frieda, followed by Bill Scully.
My name is Jerry Frieda. I'm a resident of the district. While attending last month's board meeting, I observed some actions taken by two board members that unfortunately are out of step with the interests of the community, and in view of the recent tragedy Oxford High School in Michigan represent radical views that are contrary to what the majority of our community expects. Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski both declined to vote yes on two separate resolutions. One that would keep guns secure from a 14- to 18-year-old without an adult present, and another that would prohibit teachers from carrying guns in the classroom. Additionally, although there are several procedures already in place to address the issue, the same two board members expressed support for measures that would encourage extreme micromanagement of the curriculum when any one parent doesn't fully approve of a book, movie, photo, or just about anything. The position of these two board members would deprive District 211 students of the safe, honest, and accurate education that they deserve. Thank you to the board members who continue to support these goals. We should be helping our students build the critical thinking skills that they will need to pursue the jobs and careers that they want, rather than having board members put up barricades built from their own fear-based politics. But sadly, Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski want us to join both of them in being more of afraid of a 15-year-old having a book in their hands than having a 15-year-old having a gun in their hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Scully, followed by Joyce Slavik.
Hi, my name is Bill Scully. I've been a resident in 211 for over 30 years. Both, all three of my kids went to 211 schools. I'm a big proponent of 211. I've been teaching, I taught at two of the schools for the last 30-some years. First time I was up here was in the spring of 88. We had a Conant High School. We had three kids that qualified and placed in the state tournament in wrestling. John Medegowicz, Chris Rushka, and Courtney Pitter. This past spring was very difficult for sports, and I think it was phenomenal, phenomenal that these kids from Fremd High School were able to have a state tournament, and they were able to be placed in second. Second in the state was phenomenal, okay? Last year, the IWCOA, which I'm a board member of, the Illinois Wrestling Coaches and Officials Association, we made a decision to move our wrestling season to the spring, okay? Because we knew what was going on. We had the foresight what's going on. We moved it to the spring. The IHSA agreed with it. The IHSA said, "You're not going to have a state tournament." Now, I don't think those kids that were here that were playing, were just playing intramural. They were playing to become state champions. I'm sure they're very happy that they took second, but they're upset that they didn't win it. Any of you that are athletes or have ever been athletes, you know that the ultimate in competition is to be a champion and get as close as you possibly can. So the IWCOA decided to have a state tournament, all right? Right at the exact same thing as the IHSA. We had a regional tournament that you had to qualify for the sectional, which you had to qualify for the state tournament, all right? We rented out a convention center in Springfield on our own dime and held the state tournament. Six kids from District 211 placed in the state. From Fremd High School was Wiley Chessup, Maddox Kaliminski. At Conant, there was a state champion, Ethan Stiles, a kid named Jack Homannak. And at Schaumburg High School, there was a Kayden Kirchner and Grant Hanson. Those kids were not recognized by District 211. I firmly believe that they should be. As a taxpayer, they should be. They should have the enjoy the fact that they were, they tried their hardest to become a state champion, and one of them was. Guys, I don't have a horse in this race. I coached wrestling. I've coached wrestling and Conant High School for four years. I've coached, I was a head coach at Hoffman Estates High School for 18 years. I currently am the head wrestling coach at Notre Dame High School, but I think these six kids should be recognized for what it is that they did. This is not AAU basketball. This is not American Legion baseball. This is not freestyle or Greco-wrestling tournaments that have nothing to do with IHSA. The IHSA chose to not have a state tournament, and we took the ball in our hands and said, "No, we're not going to do that to kids. We're not going to cut away their dreams. We're going to let them have a chance to qualify for the state tournament and place in the state tournament." And six of our kids that we paid tax dollars for was eight, they earned that right. They should be deserved, they should be in front of you, and I'm hoping it's an oversight, excuse me, and nothing that you're choosing IHSA over this, but this is not something that I'm proud of as a District 211 employee and a District 211 taxpayer. These kids deserve to be recognized. They should be on the Wall of Fame. They should be recognized for what it is that they accomplished. I'm going to also let you know that there is not a single wrestling coach--
One minute remaining.
Thank you. There is not a single wrestling coach or any family member or wrestler knows that I'm doing this, okay? I'm doing this completely and totally on my own because it's the right thing to do. These kids should be recognized. Hopefully, you're choosing kids over the IHSA. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Joyce Slavik, followed by Karen Powers.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik. I am a resident. I'd like to thank those board members that voted for gun safety at the last meeting prior to the AASB convention. I understand Resolution 15 did not get voted on at the convention, which advocated for support to raise the age to 18 from 14 for locking up firearms in homes with kids under 18. As we know, last week, a 15-year-old school shooter took a gun from his home and killed four classmates, wounded nine others, and left an entire town and school traumatized for life. These laws do matter, and they do save lives. The refrain you usually hear from these tragedies is, "We never thought it would happen here." We should care no matter where it happens, but it can and does happen everywhere in this country. Please keep this in mind the next time this issue comes up for review, and consider letting our D-211 families know that Palatine Police Station offers free gun locks. Please take a stand on this issue next time. I also want to voice support for the Keeping Youth Safe and Healthy Act, as we're already hearing smears against it, primarily because it includes affirming the identities of LGBTQIA students that have historically been stigmatized or excluded. The act creates personal health and safety standards for grades K through 5, and updates and expands comprehensive sexual health education standards in grades 6 through 12. It will give young people the information and tools they need to be safe. It will support responsible and informed decision-making about their health and well-being throughout their lives. This is a good thing. School districts will maintain control by selecting their curricula and the number of teaching minutes. Parents will retain the right to remove their students from classes, but I hope that they don't. I hope that they allow their children this important avenue to get information to keep them healthy and safe. Our kids deserve the freedom to have an honest and complete education. There is a well-funded conservative movement in our country to keep people angry and divisive for political reasons. Too many people in our community are falling for this. Let's continue to keep our kids safe during this health crisis, promote vaccines and masks as a way out, and stand up for the freedom to have an honest and accurate education for our kids. Thank you to the board and Dr. Small for your service.
Thank you. Karen Powers, followed by Kristen Steele.
Good evening. My name is Karen Powers. I have a child attending D-211. Last month, I addressed the board regarding my experience with board policy II/AA. I would like to thank the board for delaying the vote on the policy until January. I hope the Board Policy Committee is actively seeking ways to improve the policy. During the discussion last month regarding board policy II/AA, it was revealed that Dr. Small said it took seven days to resolve my complaint. This is alarming because, as I said last month, it took four weeks, and nothing was resolved. Is the board asking the administration why our timelines don't align? Dr. Small, can you please provide me with details to support your seven-day timeline? I want it on public record that I am requesting this information to be sent to me via email, please. I would like to thank Mr. McGowan, Mr. Dombrowski, Ms. Klimkowitz, and Mr. Kramer for reaching out to me directly regarding my experience. It is appreciated. It is disappointing that I didn't hear from Mr. Rosenbloom, Ms. Cavell, and Mr. Bradley regarding the videos or the fact that the administration was not truthful with the board regarding the timeline. I will take your silence on the issue to mean that you find the videos, which contain violent execution-- violent executions of a hooded individual in a church choir, as well as the use of the N-word and the F-word numerous times as appropriate material for the classroom, and that the policy works as is. Ms. Cavell and Mr. Rosenbloom, you both remain dismissive to certain parents who raised concerns regarding curriculum, teachers, policies, and the administration. Your alliances are not with the people whom you are supposed to serve. Lastly, I attended the special board meeting on Saturday, November 13th. I appreciate the informal atmosphere and the dialogue between board members and parents. I would have preferred a more roundtable discussion rather than structured presentations from the administration. Thank you for pulling it together, and I hope they continue in the future.
Thank you. Kristin Steele, followed by Dave Pritchard.
Excuse me, my name is Kristin Steele, and I have two children in District 211. Tonight, you as a board will be asked to vote on the suggested motion to approve the national connection fees of $5,335 to the National School Boards Association for the 2022 year. To have this be the suggested motion, considering what has transpired the past two months, is quite preposterous to me as a parent and a taxpayer of this community. At the last Board of Education meeting on October 21st, our board discussed this matter because of the recent events of the NSBA president writing a letter to President Biden comparing protesting parents to domestic terrorists, as well as other false accusations, all of which further divided parents, administrators, teachers, and Board of Educations in a time when we could not possibly need more of the exact opposite. So at this meeting on October 21st, the fact that the majority of this board voted with a wait-and-see approach was on one end very nonsensical to me, but on the other end not too surprising, since it seems to be your modus operandi to not take a stand and do what is right for the community. After this meeting, and approximately four weeks later, on November 18th, the Illinois Association of School Boards voted to end their membership with the NSBA, which was effective immediately. While the state may have relied on the national organization to provide training, federal advocacy, resources, and networking opportunities, the state also made it clear that in no way does NSBA fill such a role any longer. The fallout of the letter and accusations within has been big, and thus far, 12 state associations have terminated their membership, with more likely to come. I know over the years, Ms. Klimkowitz, you have attended NSBA national meetings at the taxpayers' expense of over $5,000 per event, and over the course of 24 years, that does add up, and I can appreciate your desire to not want to lose out on that. But as the most senior member of this board and licensed therapist, I also expect you to have experience on how to handle dialogue at the board table, and as such, last month made sure to lead the conversation with the suggested motion to sever ties with the NSBA. Instead, you wavered and allowed the wait-and-see approach to take over, and in the end, you did not take a stand. As Board of Education president, you are also responsible for the agenda, and along with Dr. Small have a suggested motion for this evening of approving the connection fee to the National School Board Association for $5,335 for the upcoming year. I am asking that you all vote no on this motion and sever D-211 ties with the National School Board Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Pritchard, followed by Maria Gallo.
I am coming to you tonight as an irredeemable, deplorable, and a smelly Walmart shopper who breathes through his mouth. I've lived in Palatine for decades, and I'm now, according to Attorney General Merrick Garland, I am a domestic terrorist because I speak before school board meetings. The hearts of millions of American patriots are shattered and heavy with sadness as we see Marxism infecting every aspect of our beloved country. Many of us have taken our freedoms and the Bill Rights and the U.S. Constitution for granted far too long. We are mortified beyond belief and called to action as Marxist ideology and regulations are at our doorstep. We have a so-called pandemic that has been successfully weaponized to turn every aspect of our society upside down with tyrannical controls, false and manipulated data, and a brutal lust for power. I won't take time tonight to cite the dozens of studies and papers, mostly censored, interestingly, by Big Tech, that demonstrate the child tyranny and abuse going on in our schools nationwide from unfounded mask mandates and forced injections of an experimental emergency-use gene therapy, not a vaccine, along with poisonous and evil critical race theory, gender shaming and related programs, and inappropriate sexual surveys and teaching. I don't profess to know fully all of the indoctrination that's going on within this school district. We can certainly uncover much of it and are trying to do so with a barrage of targeted and focused FOIAs, and hopefully brave teachers and students, who we know who they are, who will step forward confidentially and tell us, almost like a local version of Project Veritas. I don't know if the school board is functioning in ignorant bliss of what rogue principals, administrators, and teachers are doing in these classrooms in this district, or whether you and the superintendent are co-conspirators and architects of the indoctrination programs. We know that the ultimate solution to this terrible situation is to replace school board members in fair and free elections, if that's possible in Illinois, and we are working on that and will no longer play the game that they are nonpartisan elections. Recalls are likely not possible in the interim. We are realistic about our options and the huge obstacles we face. We also know this is evil, sick, and decadent Illinois, not free Florida or Tennessee or any other state, which are all thriving. People are fleeing the state for many reasons, primarily freedom, and less government outreach, and overreach, and huge taxes and high fees. But there are still of us, still some of us here who have a calling to stand up and speak out peacefully and patriotically. Once again, peacefully and patriotically. We are proud domestic terrorists, having been denounced by such, by the Attorney General of the United States, whose son-in-law is peddling critical race theory across the United States. That is a fact. We do understand the pressures you have been under financially and otherwise from your overlords in the public educational system and the poisonous teachers unions locally and in the state, the Illinois Education Association, drug companies, the Crook County Health Department, as well as other god knows dark money. We know school boards are being paid to push this mask, vaccine, and CRT-related poison onto our children. We do understand the powers of threats and the loss of funding.
You have one minute remaining.
And to a degree, we try to be sympathetic to your plight. Tonight, we call on the superintendent, backed by a unanimous vote of school board members, to immediately issue a sweeping edict to district principals, administrators, and teachers to stop any and all critical race theory, social, emotional learning, or any other acronym that you're using to hide it, gender shaming and othering in the classrooms, and to systematically root out all pornographic and sexual materials, surveys, and role-playing in print and video form in classrooms, curriculum, and libraries. We further respectfully call on the superintendent to show courage and fortitude and move to a mask and vaccine optional program in this district, and embrace choice and freedom, especially for children that have a 99% plus recovery rate from the Fauci-engineered biological warfare virus.
Your speaking time has ended.
As we approach the celebration of the birth of baby Jesus, I want you to know that we continue to pray for each and every one of you on this board, to Almighty God, in the days ahead, that you will do what is right.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard.
Moral and humane. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Gallo, followed by Jessica Hinkle.
Hello. Hi, my name is Maria Gallo, and I've been a resident and taxpayer of District 211 for 25 years, and I congratulate you on your festive attire. I want to thank the school board for providing the opportunity to speak at these meetings. We all want our schools to prepare our students with the skills needed for college, future jobs, and careers. We all want our schools to give the same education to students from families struggling to make ends meet as they give to students from wealthy families. And we all want our schools to teach our students how to learn from mistakes so they can overcome challenges in life and build a better future. But a super minority of politicians, lawyers, and parents want to impose their version of history on all our students, and they are attacking teachers and school boards to get what they want. At the November 11 school board meeting, some parents spoke out against a district policy about teaching materials, Policy 11AA. While that policy discussion seems non-controversial, the fact that every one of these parents also said they did not want CRT taught in the schools revealed their true intentions. And that is this: They don't want any student in District 211 to learn the full history of the United States. They are echoing talking points from a very small but loud group of politicians and lawyers who are trying to spread fear about the truth. They are trying to divide our community for political purposes, and they have no qualms about ruining our students' educations to get what they want. It is no surprise that these people are also spreading misinformation and lies about COVID-19, the importance of masks and vaccinations. These people do not represent our community. Our students deserve a forthright and direct education. By studying an accurate version of the history of our country, our students learn from the mistakes of our past. We need to teach both the good and the bad of our history so they can avoid making the same mistakes. Banning the honest teaching of our history shortchanges all our students and prevents them from developing critical thinking skills that will make them successful in college and in their careers. This small minority of politicians, lawyers, and parents want to whitewash parts of our history so they can control a political narrative. They want to censor our students' education and limit our students' futures. Our students need a frank and reliable, accurate and honest education that gives them the freedom to pursue their dreams and build a better future for our country. I urge the school board to reject these attempts to limit and censor our students' education and their futures. Our community deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle.
My name is Jessica Hinkle. I have a son at Schaumburg High School. Years ago, you could hear the community members say that they were okay with paying higher taxes because our school district was so great. I know because I was one of those people. However, times have changed, and you don't hear that anymore, much more anymore. Reason being is that the community is starting to see that our district is not that great. The district, the district's own data shows a decline in academics and students' mental health. We've seen a decline in board administration and staff accountability also. Throughout this past year's boards' meetings, parents have continuously brought up concerns about drops in academics, our students' mental health, and inequities. From past meeting minutes and upcoming agendas, it doesn't look promising for a positive change. So my question is, why is the proposed budget set at $244 million, and why is it set to maintain a $3 million surplus, which, by the way, is on top of the fluff that's already built into the budget? I can understand asking for additional money next year if you're going to use that built-in fluff to address some of the true inequities across the district. You know, things such as the Palatine Consumer Science Facilities. Do you know how outdated they are? Sad fact is that most of that equipment is just as old as the school is. How old are the same facilities in other schools? Do you know that? I applaud Mr. McGowan for taking the time to visit Palatine High School, but I really wish he would have requested more time with, more one-on-one time with the teachers to learn more about some of these inequities. I challenge you all to take the time to compare the number of students registered for those classes across the districts and see if, and see if it is equitable that those students have to use that old of equipment. I also don't think that we need inequities are. We need to listen to those that are on the ground floor, the teachers. We need better communication across the district's schools to understand the inequities between them and use the best practices to minimize those equity gaps. Our students should be provided the same opportunities to succeed regardless of what school they are at. I'd also like to understand why Dr. Small recommends the Board of Education to adopt a NASB membership after they labeled community members as domestic terrorists. A domestic terrorist commits terrorist acts against their country and their fellow citizens. A parent standing up for their children's rights is not a terrorist act. The community's tax dollars should not be used to support a politically polarized organization that labels the community as such. As a side note, I'd like to just make a quick note, please understand that the gentleman that spoke earlier about the gun resolution is not the voice of the community. Some of us actually do value our students' lives and welcome the idea of teachers who are trained and licensed to conceal carry. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Scully for speaking on behalf of our district wrestlers, requesting to add those six wrestlers to be recognized. I would like to take that request a step further and include, excuse me, Lillian Reyes. Lillian is a junior female wrestler at Schaumburg High School. Last season, she achieved something no other lady has at Schaumburg High School, and I believe in the district. She is Schaumburg's first lady state champion, and she needs to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the proposed 2021 tax levy. There will be a motion to open up the hearing. The recommended action is that the public hearing on the proposed 2021 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now open. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the hearing is open. We do have one person that signed up to speak. Dennis Wagner, please.
My name is Dennis Wagner. I've been a resident of the district for about 20 years. I've had two students go through Fremd already in District 211 here, and then I have one son starting next year. And what I want to do is just start out by looking at, there's an item, Agenda 10B, where it talks about the 142, about 143 million, this is the, sorry, I'm trying to read this small text, is the operations and maintenance fund. And what I want to talk about is, a read here is, this past year saw a rise in fund balance due to the sale of the district's 62 acres of land at a gain of over $17 million, as well as a fiscal 2021 budget surplus experienced as a result of the pandemic. In years prior, the district, the district's total fund balance steadily and intentionally declined from a high point of over 60% in 2012, 13, to a low of 41% in 2017, 18. The district has utilized its fund balance for several board-approved purposes, such as the funding of capital projects and the paydown of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund or the IMRF pension liability. The recommended strategy is to maintain reserve balances in the current range for future needs, such as additional capital requirements, additional staffing needs of the elementary, and secondary school emergency relief. My point here, you know, just to look at, so we look at, we had a surplus last year. We had, because of pandemic, so we had reduced funding, sorry, reduced spending because students were kept at home, and we had additional funds coming in. Yet, we're not looking at the needs of the school, we're just, you seem to be just wanting to take the easy way out and just raise, raise the levy. And my fear is that when you take this to the voters, they are, they are, they are, we're all overtaxed, and if you come to them showing that we had a surplus, where they're, especially when their own kids were, how do I say it, given less than an ideal education during the pandemic, and so we saved money. And so now you want to come to us and say, "We're going to raise the..." And so now you want to come to us and say, we're going to raise the taxes not because of need. There's only, I believe there's a $600 million, I don't know the number, there's an amount that is needed, but it's not the amount that you're asking for. You're asking for a flat 1.6 levy, which is, which is the most you can, most you can do without a special assessment, whatever it's called. So I just ask you to consider what, the impact you're having on the community. You come to them year after year after year with requests to increase levy. By doing so, you're overtaxing them and making them leery of future needs. So that when District 211 does have a need, the taxpayers will say no. And that's something you have to think about. We do not have a need this year. We have surpluses, we have money coming from land sales. In the future, we will have a need, and I would ask you to consider that as you vote on the levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the tax levy? Okay, if not, then the recommended action is that the public hearing on the proposed 2021 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And it's a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, that will bring us to our presentations, and it would be the equity and cultural audit themes and recommendations.
Instruction, and I will share the final recommendations to the board regarding the Be Young Associates two-phase audit of District 211. This equity audit has been just one part of our equity journey. District 211 continues to evaluate inequities in academic achievement within academic goals and implemented targeted interventions to decrease the unintended hurdles students are experiencing. Throughout the past six years, schools have expanded these academic interventions to include professional development for staff, implement more parent groups, and increase student clubs. Yet the audit was conducted as another source of data for use in hearing the experiences and challenges regarding equity from all of our stakeholders. Tonight, we will summarize an overview of this audit, the themes that were heard, and the recommended changes that came through the audit process.
As we prepare to share with you the final results of the equity and cultural audit, we first want to set the foundation and provide historical context for our journey to this point. The District 211 Equity Team was created in July of 2020. The team began as an opportunity to bring together students, parents, and staff members to talk about equity in our District 211 community. It was important to include and affirm the voices of our students, staff, and families by hearing their experiences and perceptions of our district. We set forward during the first months of the 2020-2021 school year to define the organizational priorities and practices that contribute to equity in District 211, often finding that there are ways we could become more equitable. As we began to analyze both qualitative and quantitative data, the team saw a need for additional feedback from our community. At the December 2020 board meeting, we asked you to approve a contract with Be Young Associates to conduct an equity and cultural audit of District 211. You supported the audit, and we began to collaborate with Be Young to host focus groups and interviews, first with our students and parents, and then with our staff members. The process was open and inclusive of everyone who chose to participate. With the feedback from the student and parent focus groups, the equity team was able to create the District 211 Equity Plan, which is our framework to drive short-term and long-term change in District 211. We presented this plan to you during the June 2020 board meeting and began the implementation of the 16 priorities immediately after. We also engaged our staff in focus groups over the summer, allowing us to hear their voices, experiences, and perceptions. After the conclusion of the staff focus groups, Be Young Associates analyzed our data and recently provided us with their final report, which contains themes from each phase of focus groups as well as final recommendations. We present these themes and recommendations to you this evening. Before we talk about the actual themes and recommendations, we also wanted to reaffirm our commitment to increasing equity in District 211. Our equity team continues to meet, and we have transitioned from what we consider the development phase of the team into the implementation phase. In this implementation phase, we have created school-based student equity teams at each of our District 211 schools. These student-led teams meet regularly to discuss issues that are important to them and plan for school improvement efforts and events. It has been both exciting and refreshing to see students positively engaged in their school communities. In addition to the student-led teams, each school also has a staff equity team, which focuses on how the priorities of the equity plan can be implemented at each of our schools. These three teams, the District 211 Equity Team, the School-Based Student Equity Team, and the School Staff Equity Team, work collaboratively to increase equity and implement the District 211 Equity Plan. Now that we've reviewed our past and current organizational structure and progress, we wanted to share with you specific information regarding the equity and cultural audit. This audit was divided into two phases. Phase one focused on facilitating homogeneous student and parent focus groups. As you can see on the right side of the graph, there were 40 total focus groups organized into Asian, Black, Latinx, and White groups. During these discussions, 205 students and 165 parents participated. Additionally, Phase one included individual interviews with district-level administration and the principal of each large high school. Phase two consisted of focus groups with all levels of our organization, including classified staff, which constitutes support staff, maintenance and custodial, and teacher assistants; certified staff, which includes counselors, social workers, and teachers; school and district-level administrators; and Board of Education members. Overall, 548 District 211 stakeholders participated in the audit. Each of these 548 stakeholders was able to share their personal experiences, perceptions, and thoughts about equity in District 211. As part of their process, Be Young Associates analyzed the information shared during each focus group and interview and sought to identify themes that were present both within and across the groups. These themes were then used to make final recommendations. The first themes relate to the Phase one student and parent focus groups. As you can see on the slide, there were seven themes that permeated these conversations. First, there was a strong sense of appreciation for the opportunity to speak, listen, and share experiences related to equity. Students and parents alike talked about our school environments and the desire that all students feel safety, belonging, inclusion, and support in our buildings. Next, they shared that the desire that the high academic expectation be explicitly communicated and applied to all students regardless of race, cultural background, or socioeconomic status. Many personal stories were shared about situations that involve discipline consequences, which some participants believe were disproportionately, potentially disproportionate, potentially based on race or other factors. Almost all participants shared the desire for a more diverse faculty that fully represents the diversity of our schools and our community. In addition, students particularly identified a desire for curriculum and coursework that also represents diversity and different cultural backgrounds. Finally, parents shared perceptions about barriers to becoming involved in the school community.
The common themes found in the Phase two staff focus groups have some direct commonalities with the student and parent responses, as well as some additional insights. The staff desire to experience more rapid change with a common understanding of what equity means within all of District 211. Taking more advanced, aggressive steps to have an equity mindset in all aspects of our organization with a lens of equity taken to behaviors, procedures, and processes. The organizational change components heard from the staff would lay the foundation for the changes being sought by students and parents in seeking a safe and inclusive environment, high academic expectations, a diverse makeup of our staff similar to the diversity found among our students and communities, coursework embracing diversity, and removing barriers for involvement in all aspects of our schools and our offerings in District 211. The commonalities of the district leadership themes, which would include board members and district and school-level administrators, followed the organizational themes of including rapid, meaningful change, common understanding of equity, mindset shifts on any systems, procedures, or actions that are causing the inequities, and a staff reflecting the diversity of our students. Additional themes include an allocation of resources to increase equitable access, systems of accountability to understand and accept the experiences of our students, and create new supports and new systems of supports for all of our students. To paraphrase One Leader's response, "District 211 is an amazing community with amazing opportunities and experiences available, but not all of our students get to engage in them." The final recommendations from the audit coincide with the themes that were heard. Leadership: Create the position of a district equity officer to focus on common language needed, prioritize changes, and connect all school communities while understanding the unique aspects of each school. Collaborative structures: For common messages for all stakeholders linking school-based teams together with a district-level focus. Training: Continue professional development at all levels with common language and goals. Hiring: Diverse representation in our organization to reflect the student body. Curriculum: Showing diversity within our curricular choices with relevance to all students, including the diversity of our students and courses that reflect the heritage of all communities served in this district. And stakeholders: Continue and expanding our parent and student equity groups.
As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, our district, student, and staff equity teams have worked in collaboration with each other during this school year. We have made progress towards implementing the priorities defined in the District 211 Equity Plan and wanted to share one example from each section of the plan with you this evening. The first section of the plan, which focuses on equitable mindsets and practices, defines four areas of priority. We continue to work on each priority, but perhaps the largest focus this semester has been on Priority One, which is ensuring that our school climate and culture promote a safe and inclusive environment where students from diverse backgrounds can thrive academically, socially, emotionally, and physically. To provide a specific example, student teams from Palatine High School have created culturally-based school-wide celebrations, which they call "paloozas," during each of the first months of the school year. These student-led work seeks to ensure that students from all backgrounds and cultures feel a sense of belonging and have a place at Palatine High School. The second section of the plan focuses on equitable opportunity and achievement. One of the priorities is to ensure that we have safe and supportive learning spaces with proactive systems of support. Based on feedback from our students, many of who you have heard speak at our board meetings, we have hired, we have hired additional counselors for each school. The purpose of these counselors is to provide additional staff members to be directly available to our students during the school day. The third section of the plan focuses on equitable curriculum and instruction. We have worked with our principals, department chairs, and curriculum committee to review our curriculum, curricular materials, supplemental materials, and instructional practices to ensure that they are reflective of our diverse student population. Each department is actively reviewing the components of their curriculum as we move throughout this school year, and we have regular discussions during our curriculum meetings. The fourth section of the plan focuses on school, family, and community partnerships. Our school staff is actively seeking to strengthen the bond between all school stakeholders through the planning and implementation of parent information and engagement sessions. Highlights from this semester include Schaumburg High School sessions, as well as the parent sessions focusing on student social-emotional health hosted by Fremd and Conan. As you can see from the slide, our timeline continues additional efforts into the spring semester, as well as over the next two years.
In addition to the recommendations that we have started within our own district equity plan that Josh has reviewed, there are three additional recommendations that are highlighted right on the screen. The recommendation to hire what Be Young Associates suggested with a title of a district equity officer. Continue training for all staff with a focus on school needs but centered around a common message and understanding for equity, including concepts for those employee groups that may be new to the equity discussion, beginning with such questions as, "How does my job contribute to the success of our students, and what is my part in creating belonging in our schools?" A third additional recommendation is dialogue as to how to increase the diversity of our staff across all of our employee groups. This would include the prioritization of wants and musts within candidates, and a five-year projected needs for seeking out candidates with diverse backgrounds. These recommendations would represent the immediate changes that can continue to move District 211 forward towards changes in systems and practices during our educational equity journey and give access and a true sense of belonging to all. These recommendations coincide with the prior work done at the school level and our district-level equity team, and I recommend we continue to move forward with them. At this time, we will answer any questions or discuss any concerns or comments that you have referencing these recommendations.
Questions?
I have some. Thank you very much for the presentation and summary. One question I have is, was our agreement and arrangement with Be Young and Associates not for them to present their findings to us in this sense, or was it just to provide us with a written recommendation, and then you met and discussed it with them? Or did you not meet and discuss it with them, and now you're just summing what they provided?
The contract was a written recommendation. It was not for them to actually present. We did meet with them prior in terms of going through their written recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. On Slide 6, I'm not usually a slide referencing person, but on Slide 6, can you explain, I have a few questions on Slide 6. Why are the school-level administrators grouped together under Asian, Black, and Latinx?
It was a recommendation of the Be Young Associates that we mix those three groups together because of the number of school-level administrators that fit in each of those categories. There weren't enough to have a size of a focus group that they thought would be valid and reliable.
That size was bigger than the Board of Education and the cabinet size, so I'm not following.
And the Board of Education and cabinet were all individual interviews as opposed to a focus group.
Okay. My next question is, out of 548 participants, were there any participants of mixed demographics?
There were potentially some involved in some of the groups. It was an anonymous sign-up in the sense that we sent the invitation out to our school communities, and the people could sign up for the group that they believed that they most closely associated with.
So were there any offerings to the participants to respond that they are of a mixed ethnic group and not fitting one of these four groups?
So I'm going to remind you that we, as in District 211, did not decide on the structure nor the setup of the groups. That was Be Young Associates, and how they run their equity audit decided that, so I am not sure that I can answer that question.
So in your meeting with Be Young Associates, did you ask them that question as to why there were no mixed demographic choices available? Because out of 548 participants, I'm thinking there has to be some mixed demographics that were included as participants, but yet they're not being identified here, and I think that's a definite lacking of data and information for us, especially around equity.
They would still have had the chance to participate. They just would have to have selected a different grouping in terms of that setup, and when they were in the focus groups, they certainly could have identified themselves by a different setup. But there was no actual focus group, which I think is your question. Was there an actual focus group for that designation, and there was not?
I think that's really unfortunate and something that we are absolutely missing with regards to our community and our representation of our community and our students. I think that's definitely something that's missing. Those are the questions that I had. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kavel?
So I'm going to start with two pieces of feedback, very brief. In terms of the additional school counselors that have been hired, I know from my work on the wellness committee that students really appreciate that and the associated changes made to the interface that students work with on their devices that have streamlined the process for them to make appointments to see their counselors. That has been reported to the committee as something that's received rave reviews. So I appreciate that. So I appreciate that, and I relay student appreciation for that, too. I also very much appreciate the parent events that are being held. That's another thing that has come up repeatedly at the Student Wellness Committee, the desire for more additional parent presentations, particularly around subjects related to mental health. So I love that that's already going on, and again, I want to pass that feedback along to you. The question that I have is really more about the diverse representation dialogue sessions under hiring, and I was wondering, I'm not familiar with this term, what exactly does that look like? Is there a brief overview that's been available from Be Young?
Sure. So when we spoke to them about the final recommendations, that they use a specific terminology within their recommendations, and it isn't always the terminology that we use. And so essentially, what the recommendation means is that their recommendation is, any person in District 211 that hires someone or participates in the hiring process should regularly participate in a training or a discussion about what it looks like to recruit, and hire, and retain diverse workforce. So it isn't necessarily a specific thing, it's more of the concept.
It's like a stream of professional development. Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
I have one quick question. These recommendations, when will they be brought for Board action?
It is right here for discussion, is not something the Board has to vote on. If there is a hire, the Board actually votes on a hiring, but I would presume that if the Board does not want us to move forward on any of the recommendations, that that is part of the discussion here right now.
So it's implied that these recommendations would be implemented unless we object?
We've already been moving along on some of them before they were ever in front of us as recommendations. That was what Mr. Schumacher was going through with some of the work already in our equity plan, as well as within our groups within our schools.
Right. These weren't part of the, some of these recommendations weren't part of the presentation that we had voted on in June.
Correct. That's why they're highlighted in red.
So from that perspective, I'm not on board with hiring an equity officer at this point until we actually have a little more of the feedback and the culture and some of the other steps from June in place, in order to kind of get that ball rolling. Because looking at the draft description, which isn't available on the public portion, it seems a little redundant to some of the things that we're already doing within our HR group, so I don't see a clear delineation between some of the things that we're implementing already at the staff level with, as an independent portion of where this individual would have something that couldn't already be implemented, I guess. That's my opinion on that.
Can you talk a little bit more about the diversity, the Director for Diversity, or the District Equity Officer, what some of the duties might be, and how they would kind of blend in with the rest of the administration in the district?
Sure. This would be a director-level position, which means that this person would report to an assistant superintendent and myself. That would include them having a group of, I guess, a team, let me propose it as a team, where it would be looking at students who may not have access to or experiencing hurdles in terms of access to either our opportunities that we have in District 211, or a complete sense of belonging in order to engage fully within those opportunities at District 211. So that would include potentially students with IEPs, our English Language Learners, students who come from low socioeconomic status, students who are of a race that is not the majority within our schools, and/or students that may have some other type of hurdle in front of them that does not allow them to fully engage in our opportunities. What we found is with our students who can fully engage with the opportunities, it's because they have a sense of belonging, a sense of trust, and they feel like they're at school to go to school, and therefore can engage within all those components. This team would be looking at any one of those students, or student groups, or patterns of students who are having challenges or hurdles because they're not getting that sense of belonging or connection to the school. Add some more to that?
So are you then looking for consensus from the Board in regards to the District Equity Officer?
I am, because if there is no consensus, I do not want to bring forth someone for a recommendation, and then they do not get recommended or even considered for recommendation.
Point of order, I thought that was topic number two, whether there was going to be a formal motion?
It is a consensus as to whether to bring forth the person for hire for an equity officer, and that's when the Board votes on an actual person that's recommended for hire. If there's no consensus of the Board to follow this recommendation, I would not bring forth a recommendation for hire for someone.
So there's no, there's no plan tonight to take a vote on, even if the Board wants to have an equity officer on the staff?
There needs to be consensus of the Board as to whether to go forward with that or not to go forward with that, as well as the other ones that are in red on here.
That should be a consensus or a vote?
It's a consensus. The vote is when a person is actually recommended for hire, as an individual.
Would this person also, because we're such a large district with numerous buildings, would this person, you know, equity between buildings, which we've talked about numerous times in, you know, various points throughout the past year and a half, this would fall under that person's purview? Am I correct?
That's correct. They would be working with each one of the buildings, with the understanding of what was referenced in the recommendations, and continues on with our district-level equity team, is a commonality of the base of what the expectation of equity is, yet respecting some of the unique differences within our schools.
And it sounds like, you know, because that would fall under this, and that would, I like that this person would be focusing on that, that's very important to me, equity between buildings. I also like that this person's focus would be on the students that we've talked most about through the last year, and the students most affected by the pandemic, in terms of learning deficits, and in terms of social-emotional learning deficits, too. So I appreciate that this would essentially make those deficits a very strong target for this director's hypothetical role. So I appreciate that. I'm in favor of that because of these things, so, you know, in terms of consensus, I am in favor.
Let me break this down in two, then. So I will ask for consensus in regards to hiring a district equity officer, which will then come back to us.
Point of order, I'm not there yet, I have some questions on the slides.
And that's fine, that's fine, just one moment, because the question was raised, and I'll put it into two consensus items. Okay, Mr. Kramer, your questions, please.
Slideology, I probably missed it on Slide, oh heavens, Slide 12, you've got final recommendations, there are six of them with bullets over, you know, circles around them, and then on Slide 14, there are the same ones with red squares around them.
Correct.
What's the difference?
So the ones that don't have the red squares coincide with what was already in our District 211 Equity Plan, that Josh spoke to when he did some of the examples in each one of those. The three that have the red squares around them, those would be concepts that, even though training for equity for the district staff will continue, there were some very specific trainings that Be Young put in her recommendations, in terms of training that they have, as well as the equity officer, as well as working towards hiring diverse staff.
So to read this, then, the red ones are still work in progress, with the red squares, the others are in progress or being undertaken or already done?
The ones without the red squares are works in process, and they are tied to the current District 211 Equity Plan and Equity Team.
Okay.
That's what separates them from the red ones.
Okay, on some of the slides, just look at Slide 10, it appears elsewhere. I'm interested in accountability, the last bullet point, systems of accountability for equity, and there's a couple of questions that I need to ask before that. On a scale of one to 10, with one being that this district is totally inequitable, to a scale of 10 is we're the best thing in the equity world, where in the administration's viewpoint to District 211 stand? If you had to rate it right now from a scale of one to 10, is it a five, is it a seven, is it a two?
To group them all together and make one judgment would be inequitable. The whole point of this audit is to look at each experience of our groups of stakeholders, then find out where they lie in terms of sense of belonging, access to opportunities, and then their success in our opportunities. And we've done that multiple years in this district in terms of academic goals, by looking at different subgroups, seeing the gaps of their success, and moving them forward along that way. And part of the audit is to make sure that you look at individual groups for themselves as to where they are, and not group them together as one.
You have years and years of experience, I think that you're in a position, both of you, either of you, to rate the school district as senior administrators. Are we a one, or are we a 10, or are we a five?
I won't do it.
Okay.
I won't do it, because that's what this audit is all about. It's about mindset of how you look at your stakeholders, and treating them as the groups that they are and their own needs, and respecting those individualities of their needs, and not grouping them all together as one.
Yeah, okay. Then how does one create a system of accountability for equity if you don't know where you're at right now, or where you're going?
So the system of accountability comes from multiple measures. One, we have a system of accountability within our equity of our academic progress through our academic goals. That has been in place, and that continues to be in place.
Yes, it is.
Another part, in terms of the accountability for equity, would be within the definition of, if the district definition of equity involves a sense of belonging for all, then measuring that sense of belonging.
How will you do that?
We have different, we have, you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt for just one moment. Just a reminder, please make certain that your masks are on and covering your nose and your mouth, please. That's one of the requirements in our schools, in our meeting here, so please.
So the Board had approved us to use a software platform called Panorama Education, and part of the Panorama Educational Platform has a series of student surveys. One of the definitive categories within that student survey is sense of belonging to your school, and that's one of the categories that we have used in our survey and gave to our students in the fall.
Can you post those results? I don't know what they are.
I believe we provided those to you in a recent, a previous Board letter, but I'm happy to reprovide them to you.
Yeah, I missed it, but if it's an online, it's an online program, right? It's a computer-based program on your tablet kind of thing?
Yes.
So doesn't that generate some statistics that we can see?
Yes, that's what he's referencing.
Oh, okay. Metrics, okay, then, there was some discussion about additional counselors that had been hired. Are those permanent hires, or are those ERISA hires?
Right now, those are hired through grant money, so they are not currently permanent employees, they are grant-funded employees.
Is there a plan to retain them?
Only through the grant, right now.
Okay. When the grant expires?
When does it expire?
When the grant money expires, are the counselors, the additional counselors going to be retained?
Not at this point. They, that's how they're hired right now, is through that funding.
Well, I'm looking at the end when the grant money, you know, runs out.
If I may interject, well, then that's where it comes into our budget and our planning for the future, when the ESAR money runs out.
I understand.
Okay.
Then, there's incomplete information, like you do have a draft job description. There's nothing in here that tells me what the salary is going to be for this individual, the post-salary. You went over a little bit about the structure, the reporting structure. It's a director who will report to, I assume, Mr. Schumacher, is that correct?
He would report to either Mr. Tenevor or Mr. Schumacher. Both are assistant superintendents.
So this person would have two bosses?
No, that was an OR statement.
That would be what?
That's an OR statement, and the starting salary for a director, depending on their experience, is just under $150,000.
What qualifications are you looking for? An EDD?
They do not, a director is not required to have a doctorate.
So what is a snapshot of the qualifications that you're looking for in the EDD?
So they would have the experience needed, whether it be through their prior position, whether it be through training, there certainly is educational coursework and training that you can be with this, in order to meet the requirements of the draft job description that was given to the Board.
When you post this for hire, will those qualifications be also part of the posting?
The qualifications needed for the applicant are posted in our postings. That's our normal procedure.
When would it be posted, if there's a consensus of the Board?
It would be posted for hire for, starting July 1. So it is not for this school year, it is for next school year. I think the applicants that we would attract, if the Board wants to go forward this, should be applicants who may be currently in a position with the school district and under contract, and therefore may apply for a new position, as long as it starts after their current contract, which will be done, and typically within a school district contract, and on June 30.
Okay, so July 1 of next year.
Would be the start date of the employee.
The, I'm not surprised here. Recommendation number four, this is in the, it's not on the graphs, it was in the dialogue.
The write-up?
Yeah. It's on Page 5. Recommendation number four. Be Young will immediately and personally provide District 211 our, quote, "basic equity workshop," and help to identify and certify those selected for the train, the facilitator program. Is this already been done?
No.
Okay, what's that going to cost?
Nothing.
Okay, they're going to come in and do it here for nothing?
It was included in our contract for the...
It was, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a follow-up to Mr. Kramer. This week alone, I have created two full job descriptions for a company I'm working for. In those job descriptions, to Mr. Kramer's point, include department, reporting to, qualifications, education, experience qualifications, when and where it's going to be posted, and for how long. I think that the draft job description that we've received is missing a lot of detail, and I would like to see all of those items included and re-directed to this Board of Education. This is the first time since I've been on this Board that we've been asked to consider adding a position at this level, and I think to have a thorough and complete job description for us to then decide whether or not to approve adding it to our job list and headcount is something that we don't have right now, and would need before I would feel comfortable, as a Board, us making a decision as to whether or not to approve this position.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenblatt, I concur with you 100%.
I just have one more point to make, and back to my original point versus having this individual. In the themes, we have a specific, a specific theme here that says, you know, from the perspective on leadership, and on, I believe it's Page 3 of the write-up, Theme 7, there's a perception that a top-down hierarchy exists versus the existence of an autonomy and of moving from telling to listening. Leaders report a practice of authoritative command from the central office, and decisions are viewed by many as disconnected from the day-to-day realities of buildings and classrooms. I feel that adding another administrative position just kind of compounds and reinforces that theme. And maybe that's just from the job description, or, you know, I'd rather see individuals empowered within the school that are there on a daily basis versus somebody in the admin center as a centralized point of contact, trying to unify all of these. We know that every school in our district has a different culture, our Hoffman culture is different than our Palatine culture, is different than our Frem culture, and to try to have an individual that has to... culture, and to try to have an individual that has to chase down five different cultures and try to advocate for students within those cultures, that might be minorities outside of the prevailing majority, is, is almost a insurmountable hurdle for that person.
So are you suggesting that maybe we have one for each building?
That maybe you have a champion in the buildings that might fit the needs, that might be a better approach, in my opinion, versus the recommendation for one central admin, especially when I see this theme reported in here.
So you're suggesting five?
I'm not suggesting creating new roles. I'm suggesting maybe having the needs filled by five individuals that are within the buildings.
I'm not sure I understand that. So you want to add more responsibilities to their current job or give them a separate job?
Again, I'm just looking at it from a strategic point of view. I'm not looking at it from an operational point of view. But the operational recommendation seems to not align with the strategic themes that I'm seeing.
I understand, thank you.
I disagree. I think that that's the purpose of the student teams and the staff teams at each school, and I think that those teams would be much more effective if there were a captain rowing the ship who has, that captaincy is their dedicated role and responsibility. So I don't think it's an either-or, I think it's an and. I think we can do both. I think, certainly think we have the financial resources to do both, and I think that the efficacy would be maximized if we did both.
I guess I'm really perplexed. We keep talking about equity, we want to do better, we want input from others, and here we have an opportunity to bring someone in who's got experience and a different set of eyes to be able to come in and help us hit those recommendations and do, listen to the teachers, listen to all the staff, work with the administration, and help our students progress. I think that that's, that's really important.
Ms. Klimkowitz, may I ask, is, are you basing this thought on an external hire or an internal hire? Because you're mentioning a fresh set of eyes bringing somebody in, but I would imagine that this position would be posted for an internal hire first.
And that's, that's a valid point. I don't know. Would it be posted internally first?
We post all of our administrative positions internally and externally, and we interview internally and externally at the same time.
Okay, so then that goes to your statement about maybe having somebody from within, and that's a possibility also. I don't know who, you know, there may be a person who feels that they meet these qualifications that would, you know, be great at this position, or it might be somebody from outside. I don't know, but I think that that's an important position, and I think it's important that we do it. And I think we do have on this draft that we have received a listing of what the duties are, and I know that with every job posting, you do list the qualifications, and we don't get into each one of those.
We don't receive the same, we don't receive a copy of the job description for every administrative appointment that comes before us, and that's never been an issue before. I take the point that this is a new position, but at the same time, like, I mean, I view our function as, you know, we set policy and we set a direction, and then we have the people in place under Lisa's leadership and including Lisa herself to execute that vision. So this, to me, and the description that's been provided fits that bill, in my opinion.
My concern is, how can we, as a Board of Education, approve someone to take a position when we don't know what the qualifications are? We're going to be presented with a resume and a recommendation without any idea as to what are required to fill the position, and I find that very difficult.
If that's an issue, we'll certainly, if we were to move forward, right, at this board's consensus, we would certainly have, bring you whatever you would feel most comfortable with as we bring forth the qualifications of this person. And so the sticking point here is the qualifications of a position that we haven't even posted yet nor hired, we certainly are happy to bring those as we bring the rest of the employment package to you.
Can you write those up and provide them to the board at the next board meeting?
Or in advance of the next board meeting?
Yes, but there need, I would appreciate if there is consensus, before we turn our wheels and spend time doing this, that there's consensus for this position. Doesn't mean that you can't come back and say no, but if there's only a couple people here that want us, there's no need for us to go through this process unless, or there's another idea on the table, that there's more people hired for this position.
Don't, please don't misinterpret my, my concern that we don't have a job description including all of the requirements and qualifications, to say that I'm not in favor of this position.
Okay, that is helpful to understand.
So, so, so don't mix those because, you know, I'm in favor of the position, but I need more information before even you move forward with starting to post and accept candidates, because you can't properly assess a candidate without knowing the qualifications. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing is.
Hold on, let me.
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I had a couple comments. So I always wondered why I was here, now I know. So it's safe to say District 211 has some work to do in the Equity Department, right? So kids were screaming, 2020 students were screaming, community members were screaming. These are issues we want them addressed, correct? The district has in turn created, assessed the situation. We brought in an audit, a group to audit the district to get determine, evidence to support these claims, correct? That we have work to do in regards to equity, right?
Yes, so everything that was presented today in terms of themes that were heard and recommendations came from the audit.
Okay, so.
The external audit.
We've discovered the issue. We're working to, we've identified exactly what's going on, in my opinion, through the use of this audit, and now we have to address them. So I really don't understand how anyone could be opposed to the idea of bringing in a new set of eyes external. I would say, I would definitely be in favor of external because the climate and situation that it is, the faculty members that are already here are already a part of this climate. And to Mr. Dombrowski's point, they feel a certain way about the climate, existing climate, I would much rather prefer somebody from the outside. But at this point, it would only make sense to an Equity Officer for two big reasons. Number one, so it stays relevant. It stays relevant because it's such a big issue, we built it into our strategic plan moving forward, correct? An entire section dedicated to Equity because it is a monster of an issue to kind of dissect and address, correct? So at this point, so for accountability, I'd like to have one point of contact so we can address this. That way, with the systems that we're already putting in place and the ground and the momentum we've already picked up, I'd like to have someone outside of Mr. Schumacher to yell at when things aren't making sense. So number one. And number two, again, to stay relevant, because this isn't a new issue. This isn't something unique to District 211. I don't, you can't really put it on a scale because essentially every school district in the state, in the country, has this issue. Like, there isn't a school district that doesn't have these issues. There just isn't. If one doesn't exist, I've searched, trust me. But the reality is, we, we need help. I want to commend the district and administration for everything they've done, the historical stuff that they've kind of composed and put together to address these issues, but I'm very much so in favor of hiring the outside and the point of contact, someone to be held accountable as we get more aggressive as solving these issues.
Okay, before I ask for consensus, just a reminder that the board's role is to give direction to the superintendent, and it's the superintendent's role to carry it out. I think if we start to get into the minutia, that's not exactly where we want to be. But the administration is very willing to provide a little bit more detail and the description and things of that nature, but that, that is kind of going above and beyond of the scope of what the board should be doing. So let me ask for consensus for a district Equity Officer, provided that you give us some more detail as to what the qualifications would be and a little bit more of the job description. So are you in favor of having a district Equity Officer?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan, okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Okay, Ms. Cavill?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosenblum?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Kramer?
Not without those details. I'm not going to give you.
And I, I support it. So there's four that are in favor, so there is consensus.
There's no consensus, there are four people who want it, there's no consensus.
Consensus is a simple majority.
Okay.
So do you need consensus on these other two items?
So the other one is moving ahead with the plan as presented. Are we in favor of, or is there consensus for the plan and what you've seen, what you've read about moving forward?
For the, how are we going to handle diverse hiring? Is, is there sort of a, is there, I guess, I don't know, I'd like to know. I mean, it's one thing to say we're going to increase diverse hiring, it's another thing on how that's implemented.
Is the professional development that you've spoken about in both of these items, training and hiring, available within our existing systems? Or is this something that has to be added to existing systems to fulfill this requirement?
Can you ask that in a different way?
So, like, you know, our teachers and, like, staff members and administration regularly go through professional development as part of the course of their jobs. So I'm assuming in like course selection, are there courses that they can select from that would fit within this, you know, ongoing diverse training about equity? Or is there professional development available within the selections that are already provided as a routine part of working in the district that would fulfill? You know, I know it's called here, as we were speaking about previously, diverse representation dialogue system sessions, it sounded a lot like regular professional development about having an equity lens to the hiring process.
Sure, so we would take a look at both the experts we have internally and then potentially engaging experts from externally to come in and help us with that.
Okay.
All right, Mr.?
I have a question, I'm sorry. Under recommendation number five, create professionally facilitated, and going back to those diverse representation dialogue sessions for hiring directors, right? It's saying that they're, that they would, that they're recommending creating a professionally facilitated program. Would we be responsible for actually facilitating and delivering those dialogue sessions for hiring managers, for hiring directors? Or would be Be Young Associates do that?
I would answer in the same way Ms. Cavill's question. We would engage our internal experts in the process, and we would also look to engage external experts in the process as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, last question. As far as the professional development, do you have an idea of what that training is going to look like at all?
Sure, the one mentioned specifically in the recommendation was a training conducted by Be Young Associates, and that was part of our original contract, was to have that session. They call it their basic equity training session. So that would be one of them, but we would continue training after that on, again, in the same way. We have internal experts in Equity, which do work in each of our schools now. We would also look at external experts on issues that we need an external expert to come in on.
And that includes all staff members?
Correct.
Teachers, lunch ladies, school bus drivers, okay.
Okay, so just to finalize, I don't, I don't have any objection to training. I think we're, we're in consensus on the training. I just, again, to the point where we have this write-up where Theme 6 says, we need to have a diverse staff that is representative of our student population. There's a widespread understanding that having a diverse staff positively impacts the performance of students of color and those of different ethnic backgrounds and logistic abilities. Hiring a diverse staff is an existing policy of the school board. So then this recommendation that we're being presented is to rapidly increase racial diversity of staff and leaders and build the groundwork for future demographic changes. How does that align with what we're doing now? I mean, what is, what is it that we're going to do on recommendation five that's going to accelerate what we already have in place?
That's what the professional development that we've been discussing in different areas is about. We can't keep doing what we're doing because we're not getting the results we want. Therefore, we need to bring in internal discussions as well as external discussions of people to look at how we're approaching our hiring, and that comes from all the people who are involved in hiring, whether it be at the first level when we have groups of people who do a first-round interviews, to the second and third level of some of our licensed staff who go through multiple rounds of interviewing in terms of what is being looked for. Are there any systemic barriers that are causing us to not hire people? Are we not getting enough applicants representing the diversity of our students to actually apply for our jobs, and how do we change that? And then finally, once we have diverse candidates in our employment, how do we retain them, support them in a way that they want to remain within our district? That's all a part of the hiring components.
And, and so my only concern is, up to this point, we've, we've been hiring exceptionally qualified teachers, and I want to make sure that that doesn't get compromised as part of this initiative, and I just want to make sure that that's clarified.
There are exceptional teachers in every category, I can assure you. I think the, the point of diversity is just, again, to have the staff represent the students of the, of the district at this point, and it is something at this point, you can statistically prove that students do better in diverse classrooms with diverse representation than without. So at this point, it is a need that every student in the district needs at this point, so if they, it's a, it's a, we need to be more aggressive about it at this point without, again, without sacrificing the quality, I understand that, but where's the trade-off, you know?
I don't, I, I would say there is no trade-off to academic excellence.
And I believe that the staff that we currently have hired, you know, is extremely well-qualified. I don't think we would hire someone that, that is not, at least, I don't believe we've done that in the past.
I resent the implication that, again, it has to be an either-or. I think it's a both, very clearly. I think implying anything to the otherwise is frankly offensive.
And I think without lowering our standards and lowering our qualifications, there are many, many things we can do as a school district to increase the diversity of our applicants and our staff. And part of that, and from what I'm reading in recommendation five, is to work with our hiring management to better prepare them, to assess individuals on qualifications outside of potential systemic concerns that we have now with the way that people may be thinking and have them think in new ways, in addition to making sure that they're meeting the qualifications from an educational perspective. So I don't, to say that we might lower our qualifications of educators to improve the diversity of our district, to Ms. Cavill's point, I find that offensive to say that that, that's a concern and something we should even really be thinking about.
Okay. Then again, I'm looking for consensus to move along with the recommendations that have been presented. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Cavill?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rosenblum?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
It's not, it's not a plan without metrics and accountability, so no.
Okay, and myself, yes, so you have consensus of the board to moving forward with the plan and of exploring the diversity Equity Officer.
And we'll bring back more details for that.
Yes, please. All righty, thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. It has been requested that letter J, which is bids for consideration, be pulled, be removed from the consent agenda. Is there anything else that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Originally, we were going to have two motions because Mr. Bradley was not here for a meeting. However, since he is not here, we can do one motion, and that motion is that the consent agenda with the removal of letter J be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay, and. Okay, and then, the next item then is letter J, the bids for consideration. The recommended action is that the Board of Education award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Couple of quick questions on this. Are these bids for the summer then? Because typically, we get these in February and now we're getting them in December.
Lauren Kay, are you with us?
I am. Yes, the bids are for summer work, with the exception of the, obviously, the fall sports would be summer purchase, but for the start of the new school year. There is one life safety item that will carry into the summer, the summer of 2023 as well. The reason that they're being bid earlier is just due to our current economics as well as current trends that we are seeing with our contractors and we wanted to ensure that we were out early enough to be able to secure contractors and also have supplies and materials available and on-site so that our construction is not delayed for the start of the school year.
Okay. Additionally, will we be seeing additional bids for approval between now and, and the summer?
Yes, we will.
Okay. So, looking at the, the bids for consideration, we're looking at about $10 million. Our budget for this year is about $17 million, so we're anticipating about another $7 million in bids between now and summer?
You've already approved some bids in prior meetings and then we will anticipate that we will have additional bids coming still in the, in the spring. Some of the bigger ones would be something like paving, as an example.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you just clarify? I noticed that a lot of the bid amounts that are awarded do not match the bid amount submitted in there and that some bids are lower than the one, from firms that are not awarded and it's, it's difficult to determine if there were partial based on geometry, or, I'm sorry, geography, or if there were partial bids based on life safety versus O and M capital or just a capital project?
Yeah, so, the way that the bids were put together, the bid packets, is that there are about 10 individual bid packets by trade. They are inclusive of the work that you see recommended here, the kitchen, the washroom renovations and life safety projects. For whatever reason, vendors may have opted not to bid on certain bid packets, so that would make it a partial bid. Otherwise, we also had some bids that were withdrawn, but in the recommendations that are provided tonight, all of the bid recommendations are the lowest responsible bidder by trade for the combined work.
Okay. In the future, when we, when we get the submittal, if it's possible, could we just get the list of the, the itemization instead of the summation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The itemization instead of the summation? The summation appears like we're neglecting the low bidder.
Yes, I can provide that information.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, the next item is special reports and communications, Freedom of Information Act requests. It's an information item. There are no questions. Next is the Illinois Association Letter of Appreciation. If there's no, oh.
This is in recognition to all five of our schools that hosted the Girl State Tennis Tournament. This is the 50th year of the Girl State Tennis Tournament. I'd also like to add in that Hoffman Estates High School hosted our Boys IHSA State Finals. So, thank you to all of our schools for the extra work they put in to provide excellent facilities and experiences for our teams as well as teams that visit us for the state finals.
Okay, thank you. And I know that the, a lot of the schools that do come to visit us and participate here are, are very appreciative and of our facilities and the maintenance that, that is here and the staff. So, yes, thank you very much. All right, that leads us to the community engagement discussion 211 together. Basically, just to debrief, we had the, the meeting in November. I don't know if any board member would like to share some feedback in regards to it?
Yeah, I, everybody that I've talked to feels that it was a positive experience and, and that they had appreciated it and I think that that was also conveyed at the podium tonight. I think we should have another one.
All right. I think as, as we go forward, we've got the strategic plan survey that's gone out, so hopefully, we'll get some good information, some good feedback from, from people and then maybe look forward to making another community meeting. I, I think we, you know, should extend a thank you to those who attended, a thank you to, to the staff that was there, to the administration, Jaquese Gilbert, Matthew Hildebrand and Dr. Mary Pat Cronis for their presentation. That took a lot of planning and being able to do that. It was good dialogue. And also to Detective Christine Gibbs, who's the school resource officer over at Schaumburg High School. I think that was valuable for people to be able to see who she is.
I would also like to thank Hoffman Estates High School, the, the staff and administration from the school for hosting.
So, I do not think that the meeting was a success and I think that for a few reasons. I think the parts that had, the parts that were positive, like the presentations, the structure that was added into the original proposal that were positive, would have had a lot more reach into the community, a lot more people would have seen that valuable information had it been presented at one of our regular meetings that people participate in. The handful of people that were there, the vast majority of them were already the most highly engaged members of the community. They are already people that speak regularly at almost every board meeting and we hear from, sometimes on a daily basis, certainly on a weekly basis via email, with phone calls, with various administrators and personal meetings and FOIA requests. So, in terms of what the purported aim of the meeting was, which was to improve community engagement, I think on every measurable metric, it was not a success. And I think it would have been more successful if we had had the positive parts presented at a regular meeting where many more people would have seen them. I also think that it's very apparent that if we're going to legitimately pursue more in community engagement, that in a large district like ours, we have to be more systematic about that and that is not necessarily offering additional board meetings simply because of the history of meetings exactly like this one, which are frankly poorly attended, which every community member has the right to not want to attend their local board meetings. But it's not, that's not the only way that parents and community members engage with the school community. We have large schoolhouses and many people and students that, that attend them every day and building those connections, I think, are really important. And we've heard multiple times over the last year and, year and a half, and again at that Saturday meeting, not through somebody who was there as a member of the public, but through part of the presentation that was delivered, that we have a serious issue about building bridges with people in our community for whom English is not a first language. We have heard that over and over again, that our school communications are almost incomprehensible because they are lengthy and, you know, people, I, I certainly get so many emails, it's hard to keep track of all of them. And when you open up the emails and it's six paragraphs long, single-spaced, you know, it can be difficult and overwhelming. Our school communications with communities whose English is not a first language has been repeatedly told to us as problematic and if we're gonna actually pursue community engagement, which means voices that we don't regularly hear from already, I think that would be a much more appropriate use of our time and administrative resources is to build new bridges between people that we don't hear from. I also think if we're going to have these presentations that were so positive, we should have them at a regular board meeting where a heck of a lot more people actually see those things, those presentations. So, you know, we've heard, we've heard numerous ways that we can actually systematically go about representative community engagement of what is a very large and diverse community and Saturday is not an example of that. So, that's not where I would like to see us put our time. I would like to see us, you know, ask questions of the representative community through the strategic, strategic planning process. I would like us to have a serious discussion or perhaps a presentation from our communications officer about how we can improve school communications and district communications with communities that we don't already hear from, particularly those with whom English is not a first language, you know, because we've never actually had a discussion about this problem that's been repeatedly brought to our attention. That, to me, is real community engagement and that was not what was happening on that Saturday. And I feel like somebody has to just be honest about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it was eminently successful. I know some board members were made to be uncomfortable there, but we're, we're part, we're elected people and we, we got a grin and bear it. It was the first one. The first concern about those attending was that the, the purpose of the meeting was really not clearly stated out. Evidently, the community thought that was, there was gonna be some sort of vote by, in a special board meeting about masks or COVID or vaccines. So I, I think that, that that, if that part is tweaked a little bit, I think we will get more people there. The weather was also problematic. So, you know, I, I really think that we owe it to the community to sit there like elected officials and listen to them and talk with them. That, that is really a very consistent theme in the community, is that the board is unapproachable. We don't, we don't say anything during public comments, you know, we, we can't. So this is one way where we can actually create a connection with, with the community. More and more people will come, as long as we plan it well.
Okay, let me just clarify. I know we've talked about it a couple of board meetings prior to it occurring. We were very descriptive in what we were going to be doing. It had absolutely nothing to do with talking about masks or anything, so I'm not certain how someone had gotten that impression. But, you know, we do know that there's miscommunication always occurs. So, I think it'll be vital that we get feedback from our strategic plan, the communication. If you've had an opportunity to take a look at it, it asks some specific questions and it, then it asks, you know, what are some suggestions that a person might have? So I mean, going forward, we can discuss this and see where we go with another type of a, an open meeting.
So we're delaying it additionally.
So here's the issue, I don't have an.
Ms. Cavill, I have the floor.
We're taking, excuse me. We're taking the conversation.
And I was speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
So.
Let me finish.
Mrs. Klimkowitz is speaking.
All right. That's, I think, where we want to go. I don't wanna get into a discussion in regards to whether we should or we shouldn't. My hope was that we kind of debrief on this one and it's something that we can think about going forward. Okay, Mr. Kramer?
Okay, so, you don't wanna do it. Is that correct? You don't wanna have another community engagement meeting, is it, yes or no?
That is not what I am saying. I am saying we need to wait to find out from the strategic plan what some of the input is, what's better forms of communication.
When will we have those results?
We're gonna talk about the strategic plan a little bit later on in our presentation and we'll discuss it then.
Kicking the can down a road again.
I don't have a problem with being called any names under the sun, as I've repeatedly demonstrated since I was elected in 2019, so my discomfort that you're wanting to use as an excuse for my opinion is not valid. What I have a problem with is wasting time. That's what I have a problem with.
Okay, so, any other comments in regards to this as it being a debriefing? Okay, if not, then we are gonna move along to unfinished business. Before we begin that, I would like to ask each board member that we be, you know, direct in our comments and our questions so we can move along a little bit. And I'd also ask that we make certain that we allow each board member an opportunity to speak without any interruption. So our first, under unfinished business, is the adoption of the 2021 tax levy. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the amount of $245,015,000 as the 2021 levy of Township High School District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any, any questions in regards to it?
May I start with a very brief?
Yes, please.
Opening. Tonight's levy amount recommendation includes a levy limitation of 1.4% plus new property growth of 0.2% for a total of a 1.6% increase over the last year. The levy amount voted upon tonight supports the continuation of our instructional programming opportunities, ability to fund capital projects through operations and potential savings and continues since 2017 to remain debt-free to preserve the long-term financial stability for future students. Beginning in January with a final decision needed prior to March, the Board will be presented information in consideration of and potential abatement to the levy regarding the use of the 17, approximately $17 million in revenue from the closing of the 62-acre property that occurred last year, long-range financial projections based on actual 2021 CPI, which may be available by the January meeting, and updated FY21 financial statements. There will also be a consideration of the waiving of fees and the potential abatement of refunds related to the new capture levy law of designated property appeals or heirs as calculated by Cook County. Though it is required that a levy amount be approved by the board in December, any consideration of abatement or reduction to this levy must be finalized in March and would then decrease the amount of the 2021 levy.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, did you have a question?
No.
I'd like to move that the Board of Education amend the proposed resolution to adopt the 2021 tax levy at Township High School District 211 to the amount of $241 million.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, looking at what we're doing with our projections, we are projecting that we're going to levy an amount of roughly $244 million and then we're planning for a surplus of $3 million next year, so I, I don't see the point of waiting to abate when we already know that based on our most near projections and, and budget for the '22 to '23 school year, that we already know that we have $3 million we're not planning to use that year.
Dr. Small, I don't know if, do you wanna address that, how this affects us now as opposed to waiting till we have more information in January or February where we could do an abatement at that time?
The only difference is whether the decision is made now versus prior to March. It does not have an effect on the taxpayers, whether the decision is made now or it is made in March. It would be the same amount that goes forward in terms of the tax bill calculations.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, some comments. I, I had a, a very productive discussion with the CFO and Ms. Peterson. I guess trying to, trying to help myself reconcile all the different reports that we have, the variance report and the financial report, to understand a, a feeling or a belief or really knowledge that our fund balances have been, in fact, increasing year over year over year. I went back, I went back three years and the, the analysis everybody has on their, on their, their table or their, their plate here, basically, over, because of budget surpluses, we, we budget something, like you say, we budget for a particular expense and the actual expenses come in well with under that. The, the planned revenue is budgeted at a certain amount and the actual revenue comes in more than that. And, and that, that has been a pattern since, since I've been on the board, 2018 and through, through the end of, of last fiscal year. The, the cumulative increase in, I guess, accumulative surplus, part of which we use, I understand that, including the $3,107,000 planned surplus from the budget amounts to $36,977, eight, $850. So, 3.6, 3 point, I'm sorry, 36.9 million dollars in cumulative surpluses. So 3.6, 3 point, I'm sorry, $36.9 million in cumulative surpluses. Our fund balances in the end of 2001, we take a data point, the June, the June fund balance, in June of, June of 2021, June 30, the fund balance was $144.5 million. Prior to that, the fund balance was $118.9 million, and before that, $114.9 million. We all agree and know that the dramatic increase in the fund balance was caused by two things, or was a result as of two things. The land sale of $17 million and surpluses that the district enjoyed, in a bad way because the students were in school, where we weren't spending any money. So that money, that money lands in the bank. Now, we're going to, I want to, I want to fast forward to new business B because it is, it's really part of the discussion. This, this did form the discussion with the CFO and Barb Peterson about how the reserves are kind of divvied up. I'll, I will, I'll wait for that discussion because there is some detail. But what we, the bottom line for the, for this little bit of an eye chart is that of the reserves that we have, where we have about, we have around $58 million over and above the 33%, as it stands right now. Of that, there is around 45, 45.3 million, which, which the administration says is spendable. There is, there is some discussion in, in 10B about potential uses of, of the $17 million. So that's debatable, and we'll get to it January, I don't know. But that leaves $28 million over and above the reserves that we have of around $90 million to do something with. $28 million, over and above $90 million. And my, and I expressed my opinion, and again, it's, it's to be determined, that $17 million is on the table, we'll do something with it, maybe give some of it back, maybe use it all for stuff that we haven't been able to pay, pay for before, some nice, nice, nice-to-have items. But the $28 million certainly is, is in play to either, well, to perhaps save the funds for other contingencies, although I don't know that $90 million is not enough. So I think what we're going to have to think about going forward, based on the information that we have right now in 10B, that there are about $28 million that the, that the school district, the administration, and the Board really should consider giving a portion back to, and perhaps waiting it out a little bit to see what, what the next fiscal year is going, is going to bring in terms of inflation. The bottom line is, the, the, the proposed levy is out of line with our current financial situations. We don't need the money. We just don't need it.
Okay, if I may, let me clarify. The numbers that you had just presented to us, I'm not exactly certain how you've, you've come up with all of those numbers, and I know you've talked with Ms. Hummel and that—
I'll answer that question.
But generally, we have a presentation with, with the numbers and how the district works, and I'm not the finance person, so that's why I rely on, on Ms. Hummel and how the numbers get calculated and put together.
Okay, the numbers were not calculated, they were, they were pulled off of existing financial reports, the financial report and the variation report. I did, I did do, part of, part of the problem with the finances is that we, we don't have one document where we can see the complete physical, the complete picture. And that was part of the discussion, I wanted to make sure that, that the CFO agreed that my, that my numbers here are essentially dead-on answers.
I'm sure many of the board members would agree that Lauren Hummel and Barb Peterson do an excellent job of answering questions and requests by the Board. I think it's very helpful for the Board, if there is something that is helpful for you, that hopefully with enough time in advance, that they can prepare that so that the Board receives the information that has been prepared by that office and presented to everyone in that fashion. Again, as I would say, I, I know that they are more than willing to prepare documents, given enough time, in order for the Board to make good decisions with information that they need in front of them.
So that's why it's really important to ask the questions ahead of time, if we—
And that's what I did.
Okay, good. All right. Let me kind of see if we can get redirected back over here. Mr. Dombrowski amended the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any more discussion in regards to that? His amendment is to decrease, basically, the levy amount to $241 million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion in regards to that?
Was there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. So first of all, I want to thank Mr. Dombrowski for making an amendment, an amended motion to the levy amount. Mr. Dombrowski, quick question, your $241 is actually lower a little bit from even the 2020 levy. Is that accurate, by 235,176?
The approved levy or the collected amount that this levy extension is based off of? I think you, you have a difference—
I guess it's the levy amount that this is based off of, right? What's showing on our document.
This would be an increase of about 0.3% from what was collected, so we would be extending this levy 0.3%.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, may I have a roll call on the amended motion? Please.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. All right, I put it in the wrong category. So I'm a no, Ms. Cavill's a no, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenbloom?
I'm a yes.
You are a yes, and Mr. Kramer is a yes, and—
I'm sorry, what are you, what are you repeating here?
I'm repeating the, the vote, because I put mine on the wrong side here. Mr. McGowan, which way did you vote?
No.
Okay. All right, so we have, we have a tie. We have three and three, so the, the motion fails then.
The amended—
The amendment fails.
The amended motion.
The amendment fails. All right, so now we're back to our original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion, which is, the Board of Education approved the amount of $245,015,000 as the 2021 levy of Township High School District 211? Okay, if there's no other discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Yes.
Mr. Br, whoops, sorry, Ms. Cavill?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Yes, and the motion passes. Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is the District 211 academic goals for 2021 to 2026. Dr. Small?
The new District 211 academic goals were first presented to the Board during the August 2021 board meeting. The goals have been developed with a holistic, comprehensive, and coordinated approach to ensure that every District 211 student is prepared with the skills, knowledge, and expert experiences needed for post-high school success. The goals mirror our state accountability measures and also parallel what we know, the experiences in our students in order to be successful for their future choices. The goals are structured as an overarching goal statement that describes both what we desire and expect from our students. Because of the diversity of our student body, each overarching goal can be achieved through multiple measures. The use of multiple sources as evidence of student learning gathered at different times throughout the year, within and across the multiple areas of performance, allows for a clearer representation of what student success looks like in District 211. It also recognizes and celebrates the diversity of our students and our school community. The five-year targets have been developed by analyzing previous performance data, including information from the last five years. It should be noted that the COVID school disruptions that occurred at the end of the 1920 school year and the 2021 school year significantly impacted the collection of academic performance data. Therefore, baseline data measurements were calculated using the average achievement of the 17, 18, and 19 school years. The report includes the overall description of each goal, the multiple ways to achieve the goal, the baseline performance for each goal, and the target for each goal. The structure for each goal provides the ability to look at the data holistically as a district, at a school, and to analyze the performance by different subgroups. This allows us to create and tailor programs and interventions based on yearly performance throughout the next five years. The progress toward achievement would be continually presented each year to the Board annually in August, as it has been done in the past.
Any questions? Or Dr. Small?
Superintendent Small, I appreciate the metrics in here. The only, and there are some very definitive numbers, I think that they're published someplace, although perhaps not in one place where we are. I'd like to see that as a, kind of like our COVID dashboard. I mean—
Can you explain that again to me, please?
Pardon me?
Can you explain that again to me, please, in a different way?
Many, many, okay, you do have metrics of, you know, real numbers on what, what you want to hit, okay? I'd like to have some sort of a, of a rolling report done quarterly, I guess it would be more appropriate to do it each, at the end of each semester, so we know where, where we're at and where we're going. Again, okay, so I think that that would be very helpful, I think it's important, it's sort of, it's sort of our own internal report card, much like the ISBE has done, oh, by the way, they just changed the format, it's harder to read right now. So some sort of, of a synopsis or a table showing, showing the percentages and where we are in, in meeting the goal. Again, goal number six, the equity goal, there aren't, there are no metrics here. Increased percentage of diverse staff members. Is 1% an increase? Is that a success?
The percentages are written in the paragraph below.
I apologize, they are there. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, we want 90% attendance as a goal for freshmen and sophomores in five years. Are we at 85% now?
Can you say where you are so that everybody can look at the same place, please?
So, so looking at goal number one, right? Meet or exceed the yearly, annual attendance threshold, the 90% attendance during freshman and sophomore years.
So that's a, that's not our metric? That's a metric that our, that the accountability measures of our area and state use. So there's a 90% threshold, for example.
Are we free to, to be more aggressive in trying to achieve a higher goal? I guess, why would we, why would we defer if, I mean, if we're getting 93% attendance currently, why would we lower it to 90% just because that's the state metric? If we could show improvement in that—
I'm not sure I understand your numbers.
I, I, I'm just asking why we're setting it at 90%. You said that that's not set by us, these are our goals that we're setting, and we're deferring to, I guess, a state standard goal of 90% for those?
Right, it says meet or exceed.
Right, so, I mean, why aren't we trying to improve from where we are now with our attendance numbers?
I'm not sure that meet or exceed does not mean improve.
But if, if we're at 93 now, and we come in at 92, we meet that goal number one, correct?
Exceed it.
With a drop in percentage. We could lose ground from where we are and still meet that, that goal.
This, that's what I don't understand, when you say we're at 93 now.
Well, I'm not sure what we are at, but I assume that it's above 90% for our freshmen and sophomores. Maybe I'm wrong?
This is a, this is a goal, the way we've set these goals is, what we're saying is, this is, these are the important aspects of what we believe it is to be a District 211 student, and so being an involved student is one of those. And so, as opposed to looking this holistically and saying, our district-wide attendance rate is 93%, I'm just using your number, for example, right?
Understood.
Which is a collective number for all the students across the district, right? So there could be many students that have 100%, there could be many students that have a significantly lower number, and we average out or mean out at 93. So the way this goal is set up is it's by student. So that student reaches the 90%, right? Not collectively. And then that student has met the involvement goal, which they could also meet by not meeting a 90% attendance, but being involved in an athletic team for that year.
Fair enough. I, maybe I misread it when it said all District 211 students, I, and then the mention of in a community. I read this as if it was a whole, you know, as if it was a goal for the district as a whole, and not as an individualized goal plan for a specific student or an individualized student. So I apologize if I misread that.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Superintendent, are these going to migrate to your personal goals as superintendent?
Sorry, Mr. Kramer, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, I apologize. Are, are these goals, which I think this is really good, good plan, are they going to migrate to your personal goals to be evaluated by the Board?
Yes, as the last ones were based on the last five-year academic goals, correct?
Have they been modified since, since the last time we looked at them?
No, we, we need to be meeting, remember? The request was to reevaluate it after the semester, so we will be doing that probably in, in January then.
And you're going to, you're going to have some sort of a report saying where, where we stand based on these six goals?
So some—
Let me— Our baseline data right now.
Some of these six goals could potentially be calculated after a semester. For example, the involvement section of it, we could technically calculate the percentage of where we're at after a semester based on a semester's of student attendance, based on a semester of involvement. But unfortunately, in that manner, any student that was planning to get involved in the second semester athlete, as, as a sports team, would not be counted. And so additionally, some of these are based on a state test, which would not be given until April, so it would be difficult to give results from the first semester when the state test hasn't even been given. So there's a potential that we could provide some of this as a progress, but certainly not all of them would be done during the semester.
Couldn't you provide the metric for?
At semester?
Pardon me?
At semester? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, you have, you have, the communication started with masks and the mics here. The, you have, you have five goals with pretty well-defined numbers that you, that the district as a whole wants to hit. Which one, which one of the metrics or which one of the goals can you not provide where we are as of the end of this semester?
Okay.
So you want me to go through them one by one?
Let's just give number one as an example.
Just a couple.
Just number one, A through D.
Number one, we could potentially give you a yearly attendance threshold based on the first semester attendance. Now, what I would say to that is, it would not necessarily be a great way to look at it, because there's a potential that a student could be under the 90% in the first semester, but then regain past the second semester. And so it's going to be tough to, to measure that at semester on an overall yearly basis.
But, yeah, discussion.
I'm sorry, can I—
It is, it is, it is a, where we are at right now, okay? And I see, I understand the goal is yearly, but it's important that we know where we are at right now, at the end of this, at the end of the first semester, when, when we're back in school. So I mean, you, you could provide a, a, a statistic that may or may not change at the end of the year.
As I said before, and I'm, I'm going to just repeat it in a different way. For some of these, we could potentially, I would caution the Board, on the way these are structured, to read too much into a semester-based goal. For some, we simply cannot provide it at semester. For example, goal three, component A.
And, and why is that?
Because the state SAT test is given in April.
Okay.
Maybe just for clarification, these are the goals for— Maybe just for clarification, these are the goals we're looking at for the next five years. When we meet in January, we'll be looking at Dr. Small's goals and her evaluation. And I, I'm wondering, are we kind of mixing the two together?
No.
No?
No, no, we're, we're not. I mean, the district goals are the superintendent's goals. There's, there's-
Right. And there's, there's some other goals that, that the Dr. Small has also. So, okay. Any other questions in regards to this? Okay. And if you think of something, you can always, you know, send Dr. Small an email in regards to that. All right. That'll move us along to the National School Boards Association National Connection Fee. All right. Just as a, a refresher and to put this into context, when this originally came up, we decided to postpone it to, to this meeting because of the, the Illinois School Boards Association Conference, and we knew that the directors were going to be meeting and speaking about this and issues that they were experiencing, that a lot of school districts were unhappy with the national because of mailings and things that, that were sent out. We postponed it to this time, so we can bring it up and we can decide, do we want to participate in the National Connection, where we pay a fee, or would we rather not? So, the, the entire motion is coming back to us. If we do not support it, then we would certainly vote no, and we wouldn't be part of it. So, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the National Connection Fees of the National School Boards Association for a period of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, at a cost of $5,335. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Okay. So, I have some comments to make that may help kind of direct us as well.
Brief.
All right. I have three things to read, and I will make them as quick as I can.
Can you summarize them?
No. The November, sorry. The November, there was a November 18th press release by the Illinois Association of School Boards. They voted that day to terminate their membership in the National School Boards Association, NSBA, effective immediately. We've all received information as to why they made that decision, and their concerns with the, the National Association. What I'd like to point out is what the National Connection is. It is not the National School Board Association. In fact, the National School Board Association was formed to provide support for state school boards' associations, their staff, and their elected leaders. While local Illinois school boards and individual school board members have previously had access to some National School Board Association services because of their membership in the Illinois Association of School Boards, local board members have never held membership in the National School Board Association. Prior to this year, NSBA membership was made up of 49 state school board associations. So, this Board of Education was not a member of the National School Board Association. IASB will continue to collaborate with other state school board associations to develop programs, high-quality board development opportunities, national networking and events, and federal advocacy. IASB currently, in fact, has a governmental relations staff assigned to provide support for federal advocacy, which is one of the services that the National Association provided. The National Connection, to which we would be paying $5,335 for, is a executive information and networking program for school board leaders and senior school district staff. It includes programs, symposiums, a conference, a couple of conferences, actually, and some online resources. So, what we're voting on in this motion is whether or not we should pay to the National Connection fees of the National School Board Association to take advantage of those resources that that service provides. Whereas, I would like to make sure we understand that the Illinois Association of School Boards, that we are a member of, provides similar services to us now.
I, I'd just like to look at the, the write-up here on the bottom of Page 2. It states, "District 211 has been a member of the NSBA since 1971."
That is-
Saying that is incorrect.
I'm saying that is through our membership in the Illinois Association of School Boards. And now that the Illinois Association of School Boards is no longer a member of the National Association of School Boards, this school district is no longer a member through the Illinois State Association.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Rosenblum, what you just said, it seems like this national organization is redundant. The, the services that, that we have access to, we get through IASB. We, we don't need these people.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. Okay. Thank you. All right. That will bring us to new business. And the new business is the 2020-2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The recommended action is that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the June 30th, 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which includes the financial statements as prepared by Township High School District 211 and audited by Baker Tilly US LLP Certified Public Accountants. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Small?
In accordance with requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the district is required to have an independent audit of its financial records, including a test of financial controls completed on an annual basis. The firm of Baker Tilly US LLP recently completed the audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2021, and have issued an opinion thereon. The district's 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, commonly referred to as the CAFER, was prepared by Baker Tilly in cooperation with our business office. I am pleased to introduce to you tonight Senior Manager Michael Malott, who is here this evening on behalf of the Board's accounting firm, Baker Tilly US. Mr. Malott will present the Board of Education with a brief review of the audit this evening. Thank you, Mike, for joining us.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for having me this evening. Just let me know if you can't hear me at all as I'm talking here. So, first, before I get started, I do just want to thank Lauren and Barb and their team, as they have to deal with us every year on the audit. I always say we're kind of like a tornado. We come in and mess up everybody's day, ask a bunch of questions, make and pull a bunch of stuff for us, and then we, then we leave, and let them clean up the mess when we're done. The fact that they are, you have a professional business office with very skilled people, allows us to do our job effective and efficiently. Frankly, lets us do as high a quality audit as we can do versus organizations that may not have the resources and the people you have, where it is a more complex, more difficult scenario for us to go do what we do. So, I just like to thank them because they do make our job a lot easier and allows us to turn around the highest quality work that we can do. So, as I get into this, some of you've heard the spiel in the past about what we do with the audit, but I always like to go over kind of an overview of what we do as part of the audit. And I start from each document. There's a lot of different documents that we've released. The biggest one, obviously, is the financial statements. It's the big beast. It's, you know, a couple hundred pages worth of financial information. That report is your report, is all your information, all your numbers. The only thing in that report is the three pages of opinion we provide, which basically says, "This is what we've done. This is the level of assurance we can provide to say that this information is materially accurate." And what that means is it allows you to be comfortable that the numbers provide you an accurate depiction of the financial health of the district. Not every dollar, not every penny, but allows you to make decisions and understand that information, to provide context to say, "Okay, I feel, I know where the district stands as of the state in what happened during the year that we audited." We provide what's called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give in accordance with the auditing standards. That's not a given. It's not a gimme. It requires you guys to have really good, sound financial records and information that we can really just beat up. So, it's always something to be, take a point of pride on, that just getting that unmodified, that clean opinion is not a guarantee. So, getting that during the year is something to be proud of as an organization. I always say, you know, most people don't want to read the entire 200 pages because they're not crazy like me. But I will say, if you want to take some time to read through, I always say the transmittal letter and the Management's Discussion Analysis sections near the beginning of the report always give you the best bang for your buck. They provide, the transmittal letter provides you a lot of non-financial context of what's going on, some history. So, a lot of things you probably already know, but it provides a good overview of kind of what's going on from a non-financial standpoint, which provides color to the Management's Discussion Analysis, which is a summary of what happened during the year from a financial perspective. So, those two are, I always view as kind of tandem components that you can view, and really gives you a good overview of the big things that happened during the year. There's all sorts of other good information as you move through the report. It gets into more detail, dives deeper in. The required supplementary information system, or required supplementary information section and the statistical section are also really good areas where you can go for good trend information. So, while the report itself and the bulk of the work and the information in there relates to the most recent fiscal year, those sections provide you year-over-year information on a variety of different things, both financial and non-financial. I think it's a good way to see where things are going. I'm not going to get into the detail of the numbers. You've seen them before as part of your reporting from the finance team. But I do want to note that there is one significant change that did occur this year. A new standard went into place where it changed how the student activity accounts, the money that's set aside, fundraised, whatever it may be, and used at the individual schools for organizations. In the past, that information was reported separately, and actually, the only thing we ever audited was where the cash balances were at the end of the year. That was the only requirement. It was one little schedule by itself. It said, "Here's where our balances were." We audited that only. Now, that information, one, it's actually baked into your educational fund for reporting purposes. So, it's no longer presented on its own. It's presented within one of your primary operating fund. Now, it's presented in there. Some of the information is separated out, so you can still identify it in there. But additionally, we also audit now the in-and-out activity during the year. So, not only are we providing the opinion on where the balances are at the end of the year, we're also auditing what actually happened. So, you're actually getting greater comfort on where those numbers are, to a degree, as the new standards basically require this to be reported differently, which informed how we had to audit it. So, just a, a, a change that I just want to point out, because the schedule's going away, a couple of schedules are going away, that information is being kind of blended in, but we still have to audit, and we audit at a higher level than we did before. So, just one thing to point out. In addition to the financial audit, there's a lot of other reports we also either have issued as part of the process or are in the process of doing so right now. One is the federal compliance audit, where we look at all your federal expenditures during the year. There's a lot of different rules that guide what we look at, how we look at it. And this year, we are testing the CARES Act funding that was received and used through the ESTER program, and then your special education funding through the federal government that's passed through the State Board. So, we're in the middle of finalizing that work right now. Historically, we've had no issues. We always tend to get that work done. This year, we're doing it a little later than we normally do, just kind of a request we made from our end to make sure we're doing a good job and doing it within the appropriate amount of time. That information work should be done hopefully in the next week. So, we'll be able to start finalizing that report soon. Another report we issue relates to some of the funding that comes from the ICCB, related to the state basic and state performance grants that come through. We have to do work on both the financial aspects of that and also compliance with their requirements. We have no findings associated with that, so kind of clean bill of health on those programs. There's also some statutory requirements related to, the State Board has their own financial report we're required to, to provide an opinion on every year. The one key metric from there is your financial profile score, which is here was a 4.0, which is the highest score you can get, which is great. It's a metric and a calculation they utilize to evaluate the financial health of organizations. So, it's always great to see that, that high score in that recognition category, but also having that 4.0, it's the highest score you can get. The last report that comes through that we're required to is from the Governmental Accountability and Transparency Unit, called RECIFER. That's the very last thing that will happen, likely in January. It's kind of the final piece. After everything else is done, we go in, they say, "Here's another state organization that requires us to put some of this information in a different format and submit it to you." The intent of that is to give all the state agencies who provide funding to local governments, both non-districts and school districts, a central place where they can go and see where their, their spending of state dollars and federal dollars they pass through, whether they're being reported and consistent with what their records say. Given most of your money comes through the State Board of Education, it's a little bit redundant, but it is a requirement for all the local governments. So, it's a process we go through and we work with Barb and making sure that gets taken care of. So, that's another kind of wrinkle that has come through in the last couple of years. One thing that's not necessarily pertinent to you guys is you guys generally have no findings related to your controls of processes, is that they're actually starting to now look at some of the results, not just what the numbers are, but have there been findings related to the grant funding that's coming through? And what that will have a long-term ramification on is, it could impact some potential future competitive grant programs. We don't see a lot of that in the school district world, but you never know how things will go, where if you're looking to get funding outside of a formula basis from the state, they're going to start looking at that information from those, that system, and that they're going to make some decisions based upon what's in there. So, it's, they're moving to that phase right now. Shouldn't impact you guys, since you guys haven't had any, you haven't had findings, haven't had any issues. So, but just kind of a point of note, that that may be coming through. They may be bothering your finance team with questions as they go through stuff on their end, coming down in the next year or so. The last kind of deliverable report we give, all these other reports are basically your reports, and we give an opinion on that. The last one is the Audit Results Letter. I call the one with the pretty pictures on it. That's our letter. So, basically, during the audit, we give an opinion on the numbers, and it's strictly related to, are these numbers materially stated or not? Or are you in compliance with requirements? The Audit Results Letter is basically more of our narrative to you, both required and some other information as to what did we see happen during the course of our audit. Some of it is simply communicating to you, okay, what are our responsibilities, some high points of what we looked at, what are the key areas of your financial records and systems that we focused on? What did we see that's not necessarily prescribed in the opinion that we would speak to, but might speak to in this letter? Such as if you had control issues, we would communicate it there. The letter report, as with in prior years, we don't have any control weaknesses that we've identified that are reported to you, which is great. Basically, we beat up a lot of your processes, not just looking at numbers, it's looking at how you go about recording transactions, collecting money, distributing money. We make sure that the controls are in place, that appropriate safeguards around the district's financial resources. So, not having any findings in there is frankly extraordinarily rare in the school district world. So, the fact that you can be reported with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your processes is definitely a feather in the cap. And it's continuation of just continued good controls in your organization. One other thing, I just always like to note, there's a bunch of other information in there, future GAZBs, accounting standards, if you really want to get exciting, crazy. Some also, some, just kind of FYI information, the things we've seen throughout our work with all of our clients. So, there's some informational resources in there. The electronic copy has some links right to our website with some information. Some of them may be interesting, some of them may not. But we just want to make sure it's out there for you, if you ever want to take a peek at some of the things that are going on, kind of in the government world as a greater whole. The last thing, though, to let you know is, and I always take this time, to remind you that, you know, while we work with, with Barb and Lauren and the finance team, we really work for you as the Board. You're the one to engage us and hire us to do the audit. If you ever have any questions, concerns, comments, please don't ever hesitate to reach out. We always want to keep that open-door line of communication. We have some requirements to communicate with Board members periodically as part of this presentation. There's some communications in that letter itself that are required in the auditing standards. But at no time do we want to say that's the only time we communicate with you. So, if anything ever that you'd like to, you know, reach out to us about, Barb has about 18 ways to reach me. I can't escape. So, please, don't ever hesitate to reach out with questions, or just want to know more about what we do with the audit. So, with that, I just open up any questions you may have.
Any questions?
If there are no questions, then I, I thank you very much. I, Mr. Malott, I thank you very much for staying to this hour and presenting to us. And I'd like to thank, you know, Ms. Peterson and Ms. Hummel for all of their work and everything they do. It's, they put a lot of dedication into it, and thank you for recognizing them also, because we're very proud of them. So, all right then. Thank you very much.
All right. Any, any other discussion, then? All right. If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right. That brings us to the operating fund balance for the period ending June 30th, 2021. That's an information item. And are there any questions? Or, Dr. Small?
If I may. The information from the CAFER is what allows us to complete the standalone report, that is, 10B here detailing our fund balances as of June 30, 2021. The district maintains reserve funds for several defined purposes, including financial flexibility and stability for future needs. As of June 30, 2021, the district's total operating balance was approximately $142.8 million, or about 52%. Though our reserves increased from the prior year, we've seen an overall trend. In the past five years of a decline, the portion of the increase of this past year is $17.7 million from the land, the land sale proceeds. Through our use of reserves to pay for- Through our use of reserves to pay for capital and life safety projects, fund the one-to-one initiatives, abate portions of our levy and make additional payments to reduce our debt to IMRF, our reserves for the operating fund are presented to you tonight for the detailed conversations that we will have in January. A minimum of 33% must be held as a safeguard for the financial, for the district according to board policy. We have transferred 4 million in reserve funds for the completion of life safety projects. We also have 3.1 million of non-spendable funds held for specific purposes, including prepaid insurance and benefit deposits. When we consider the use, purpose of past actions that are committed for these funds and our remaining fund balance not already designated for a specific purpose stands at 17% or $45,300, which includes the 17.7 million which is from the land proceeds. We anticipate operating each year to close to breakeven budget as we will use our yearly operating means to pay for remaining strategic priorities, including the completion of the upcoming planned capital improvement projects. The report is informational as it was stated and will be used in the discussions beginning in January surrounding the use of the $17.7 million of land sales and any potential abatements to the levy.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just, I don't want to prolong the earlier discussion, but on page three, I think that we all need to pay attention to what's being said here. The paragraph at the top, "The recommended strategy is to maintain reserve balances in the current range for future needs such as additional capital requirements," which we already have a plan for, "additional staffing needs after the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding is complete." That leaves the door open to retaining the counselors, which may or may not be necessary, and other priorities. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of dialogue here, but no, but no real, no real substance on what the fund balances will be used for. And hopefully, we will work on that in January and decide to, what we're going to do with the 17 million from the land sale and also to decide that pesky $28 million which really is in play to either give back or do something else with.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, then that'll move us to the 2020-2021 Popular Annual Financial Report of Board of Education Funds. Any questions or any other information? Dr. Small?
Well, the CAFR includes the information required within a complete audit. We have again prepared the Popular Annual Financial Report, commonly known as the PAFR, to facilitate informed understanding in a different format from the CAFR. Once again, the auditors express their high praise for the quality work conducted by the members of our business team, and I want to continue the thanks to Barb Peterson, Sandy Imes, Lisa Ochoa, and Lauren Hummel for their diligence and highly accomplished work to conduct a review of our finances and to produce the CAFR, as well as Erin Holmes, Director of Communications, and her team that assist them in the design of our PAFR documents.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that will move us to the Cobra Benefit Service Administration. And there's a recommended action that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designee to approve a five-year contract with WEX Discovery Benefits of Cobra, for Cobra Benefit Service Administration at a rate of 40 cents per employee per month effective April 1st, 2022. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to bids for consideration. The recommended action is that the Board of Education award the business for buses for the Transportation Department to the lowest responsible bidder, Central State Bus Sales in the amount of $1,296,768. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? I do have a question.
I do too.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, in regards to electric buses, I know that was one of the resolutions, and I'm wondering, did we, have we explored at one time utilizing electric buses? And can you kind of give us an update?
Yes, this latest recommendation, if approved, would bring our fleet of 164 buses, up to 40% of them using propane as the fuel. When we started down this road, we did look into alternative fuels, propane, gasoline, as well as electric. Though electric buses are available and grants are accessible, the technology is quite not ready for the rigorous use that District 211 puts our buses through on a daily basis, including the daily use in cold weather. So we will keep an eye on that, but currently it's not a recommendation for us to go down that road.
Mr. McGowan?
Was there no bid from Midwest at all? It says no, is there only the two bids here listed?
Okay, any other discussion?
If, I'm sorry, go ahead. If I could add one more thing about our transportation system. You are all very well aware that across the country, as well as in our area, educational districts are struggling to fill positions within there. We continue to seek positions as social workers, health services personnel, operations and maintenance staff, substitute teachers, teacher assistants, and bus drivers. I want to personally acknowledge the diligence and creative approach of our District 211 Transportation Department, taken under the lead of Diana Mikelski, the director. We are short 20 drivers in this district. That is 16% of our staff. Yet her team has worked unprecedented hours behind the scenes to make sure that our students remain in motion to and from school, on their field trips, to athletic and activity competitions and events. It is by no means perfect, but when you are short 20 drivers, she is doing a miraculous job, and I want to publicly thank her and her team for all the work they are doing to make that happen for our students.
Thank you. Well-deserved recognition because that is extremely difficult and we're fortunate that it's a large number, but it's smaller than some of the districts or schools that are facing. So thank you. All right, any other discussion there? Okay, if not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to student user fees introduction, and there's some information there.
This is in preparation for the decision that we made at the January meeting in regard to fees.
I would like, I have a request. So when we initially decided to waive the registration fee, because this district is very well financially resourced, one of, one of the side effects of that decision has been the reduction in registration for free and reduced meals. Is that correct? Like that's filling out that form, right?
Right, because we are also through our National Food Service, providing meals free to everyone.
Okay, so, and we have no word yet on whether those meals are going to be extended for next academic school year. We've not heard anything about that.
I'm not sure. Lauren, do you know the answer to that?
Currently, we do not. Everything goes through June 30th.
Okay, so, you know, the Daily Herald ran an article about this, that one of the side effects of this decision might be, or seems to indicate that because students, you know, don't have a fee to try, you know, a fee that they don't want to pay or they can't pay, there's less families filling out those forms, and then we have students that are essentially unhoused. So we have, we have students that are homeless or unhoused that are, who might have previously been identified through the student fee mechanism, you know, are now going unidentified in the district. And so my question is like, because I'm a, I'm a big fan of waiving fees in a well-resourced, financially well-resourced district, but at the same time, if, if this policy is having an effect on students who are under-resourced, not being identified, and then therefore not being provided the services that they and their family need in order to be, to thrive, that's a concern of mine too. So I'm, I'm not asking a bunch of questions tonight. I'm asking that when we, when we revisit this topic for a vote and for action, I was wondering if we could have some numbers on, I know you've provided them previously, but the, you know, like a, I don't know what's appropriate, five or 10-year comparison in the numbers of students who are registering for free and reduced price meals, so we can see what those numbers look like historically compared to what those numbers have looked like since we waived the registration fee? Because I think that that should be part of the discussion. Is one of the unintended side, you know, side effects of this policy of waiving the fee, you know, is that harming our unhoused or more poorly-resourced students just because they're not being identified? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering if we can add to that. Is there any way to, how can we encourage families that are in need of reaching out and making certain that they're applying for the things that would, would help them? I don't know if that's clear enough, but you know, what, what else can we do to reach out? Okay, any other questions? All right, then that takes us to establishing time, place, and date of regular Board of Education meetings. There is a recommended action that the Board of Education schedule regular board meetings in the GA McElroy Administration Center to begin at 6:30 PM for the purpose of entering closed session, with the public portion of the board meetings beginning at 7:30 PM for Thursday, July 21st, 2022; Thursday, August 18th, 2022; Thursday, September 22nd, 2022; Thursday, October 20th, 2022; Thursday, November 10th, 2022; Thursday, December 15th, 2022; Thursday, January 19th, 2023; Thursday, February 16th, 2023; Thursday, March 16th, 2023; Thursday, April 13th, 2023; Thursday, April 27th, 2023; Thursday, May 11th, 2023; Thursday, May 25th, 2023; and Thursday, June 15th, 2023. Further, that the Board Secretary be directed to post proper notice. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, a question. In your Superintendent Small, in your board letter, you went through the dates and you said that you wanted to move the April, the first of the two April meetings to the 13th because there was a holiday that fell on the, the week before. What holiday is that?
Passover.
That is, that is, the Thursday is Passover?
Thursday, April 6th is the second day.
Is what?
The second day of Passover.
Thank you.
Okay, and was there anything else that you wanted to add in regards to this?
I did also put in the board letter that should there need to, we have not, in the recent past of my knowledge, ever had to do a riff for a full-time teacher. If we do, there is a law in terms of the number of days it has to be done, and it's 45 days prior to the end of the school year, which in that situation, if we were not knowing the details by the March meeting, which would be most likely because our staffing may not be finalized, we may have to have a special meeting for that. I do not predict that that will happen, but it is certainly a possibility.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the communication away from the mic and I'm hard of hearing, so I didn't hear what you said. We have to do something in 45 days? I don't know what we were talking about.
Reduction in force.
Okay, and so there might have to be another meeting added to, to the schedule if we need to do that?
Though we have not done that in the recent past, it's, is a reality.
And that, that would be in March?
That would be in April.
In April as well. There has to be a special, so there'll be three meetings in April?
Mm-hmm.
It's possible.
It's possible. Unlikely, but it's possible.
Why would you have to, why would you have to have a special, would that be a special meeting for the reduction in force?
Yes, there's action the board has to take. So it has to be an official board meeting. That's correct.
It can't be done during a regular board meeting?
Not because of the dates.
Not what?
Because of the dates that the board meetings are following.
So the only option is, is to schedule a third meeting, which would be a special board meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I got a quick question. The, the dates look fine, what about, have we ever done board meetings at the high school? Alternating between the high school? Just thinking about accessibility and engagement. I mean, like having a board meeting in Palatine, Fram, and bopping around the district that way, just in light of pushing accessibility and community engagement? Have we ever considered it?
We've had meetings at the high schools generally. When we were dealing with our transgender and some other issues, we've, we've been at the high school. Maybe let's take a look and see what kind of a result we get from our strategic plan, and maybe that might be one of the suggestions then.
Yeah, the dates are fine, I just, the location, move around.
Generally, in the past, the meetings have been put in the high schools when we're expecting very large crowds. But that's not to say that that has to define the way we approach it in the future. Maybe that's an item for a potential discussion you could bring up to the board next time.
But we have had them. I know that when we were doing the referendum a number of years ago, we were at a couple of the schools. I remember being at Palatine.
You know, I don't know if that means then extra staff time and whatever else, like that would be part of the discussion that we're obviously not prepared to have tonight.
Right.
So, so since I've been on the board, I've always been an advocate for watching these dates to make sure that they don't conflict with as, as many, especially when it comes to religiously observed holidays. So I thank the superintendent and the administration for considering all of those and setting these dates. We've also discussed, and I know I've made comments before at board meetings regarding the, the fact that we do have parents of students in our school district who have students in other school districts, in our two feeders specifically 15 and 54, and that we often have our board meetings the same nights as District 54 board meetings. I think 15, if I'm not mistaken, are on Wednesdays now, so.
You take a week prior.
Okay, so we don't, even if it was a day prior, it wouldn't conflict, and parents who have students in both could attend or view or comment at our board meetings if they so chose. I'm wondering if, and this has been brought up before, if there's, in setting these dates, if there was any communication, collaboration, discussion with Mr. DeRoss at District 54 in relation to the scheduling of their board meetings compared to our board meetings?
Yes, I had a conversation with him. They don't set their board meeting dates until later on in the spring. There were some potential overlaps when there are, when we're following basically similar guidelines in terms of when things have to be approved, such as our budget and our levy and our hearings prior to that. He indicated that there might be, again, their board has not acted on anything yet, potentially three dates of overlap. I did give him our dates. We do our dates at this time because in our schools, we set our master calendars starting in January. We are rolling, the board meetings go on the master calendar, and we try to be very cognizant, even though we can't do that every time, we try to be cognizant of events that are happening on board meeting nights. So we run these dates at this time for that purpose.
So I appreciate that, and I know there's so much going on in our schools that this is kind of like hurting, you know, wild animals to try to get everything coordinated and then asking our schools to avoid, if they can, our meeting dates so that they can plan their activities as well. I do appreciate, thank you very much for affirming that you have had those discussions. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, then that's good, and they have it ahead of us, and they can always make some decisions also about what they may want to adjust.
Another point, I just used, I just Googled Passover April 2023. Passover 2023 will begin in the evening of Wednesday, April 5th, and ends in the evening of April 13th.
Correct, but from a religious perspective, the Jewish faith typically observes on a much larger level the holiday for religious observation on the first and second nights. the holiday for religious observation on the first and second nights.
Okay, so the 13th, even though it's part of Passover, is not considered a Jewish holiday?
It is a Jewish holiday, but it's not as religiously observed, especially within our district, as the first and second nights are.
I understand the intention, want to make sure that you're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Present.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the proposed policy revision, JFCH, Prevention and Response to Student Bullying. At this time, it's information, it's the first reading. Any questions? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the next item is potential topics for future discussion. Is there anything someone would like to, a topic for future discussion? Okay, then we'll move on to the next.
You know, I don't want to break any confidences, but, you know, we, I've been on the Board now for a little more than two years, and when I was first on the Board, the recommendations for placement were one or two, maybe an average of 1.5 a month, or, and now those, the, where we, we had four of them, student placement? Okay, perhaps you use the terminology incorrectly. It seems, and the common theme there was.
Okay, I apologize for interrupting, but can you ask, tell me what the specific topic is that you're looking at?
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like.
Discipline?
Well, discipline and specifically whether or not this district has seen an increase in violent, inappropriate student behavior. I don't know.
Maybe something, discipline in general? Is there consensus for some type of a presentation in regards to that at a future meeting?
What do you mean, a future meeting? We get the disciplinary report annually regardless. So do you mean, you know, when we get the disciplinary report? Or are you talking about February? Like, if it's in a future meeting, we get a disciplinary report?
Ms. Cavell, a report is one thing.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to Ms. Klemkowitz right now.
I apologize, you're looking at me.
All right, if I might suggest, maybe, what is it? Senate Bill or House Bill 100? And that talks a little bit more about discipline and the process that schools have to follow. Maybe that would be helpful at some time.
What is that? I don't understand what you're saying.
It's, well, Dr. Small, you want to help me out here? It's a process that the schools have to follow before a student is suspended or, excuse me, placed someplace else at another alternative school.
No, I understand.
Are you looking for information?
You know, well, I'd like to know, do we have a problem or don't with discipline this year in the school? It is pervasive across the country.
So we will get you the disciplinary data that comes out at the end of each semester that's presented to the Board. How about we start with that, and if that doesn't answer the questions you're seeking, then we can add additional information specific to that. That specifies.
Are all incidences reported by teachers or staff?
So how do we get documentation?
Okay, so now we're kind of deviating here.
I'm not sure what, all incidences of what?
This is why I'd like to have a briefing from the Administration on whether or not they believe that there is an increase in violent, aggressive, non-appropriate action in the schools.
Violent, aggressive incidents are reported by staff. I'm not, is that the incidence you were referring?
Hundred percent of the time. Is that true, 100% of the time they're reported?
When they are reported, we have the data. If they're not reported, we don't know.
Well, that's a problem if they're not reported.
I agree, but it is, we don't have the data to review, consider, and discuss.
All right.
So the question is regarding the topic and whether you're looking for a discussion on whether or not, on reviewing data, or you want someone to give you their opinion on whether or not we have a problem?
An opinion would be great, because we have administrators on the ground who have to deal with this every day, and it is a nationwide problem.
Okay, I'm uncomfortable with looking for opinions without looking at the data. We can look at the data and explore that and see where that takes us. But I'm very uncomfortable of just saying, you know, give me your opinions. We can all have various opinions.
Like, we get that data as a matter, of course, and I know this because this is one report that I pour over every time it's given to me. So it's given to you as well, and it will continue to be given to you.
Okay, let me see if there's, is there consent for a presentation or a discussion on discipline? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, generally, sure.
Before we ask for consensus, Dr. Small, when is that report? Or Mr. Schumacher, when will that report be available? I know it's at the end of the semester, but like, January? Is it mid-January, the end of January?
It'd be within your first board letter in January. Because the semester ends in December.
All right, then let me see if there's some consensus, if we get this report in January of maybe, I don't know if we would discuss it at that point, or maybe the next month, somewhere in the very near future. Okay, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, January, February is fine.
Okay, Mr. Rosenblum?
No, I'd like to see the data first.
That's why I said January, February.
Okay, the data and then a discussion afterwards?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
I am not saying. I'm saying let's determine whether or not we have a discussion after we look at the data. So, no.
Okay, so, okay, no. All right, I will say no also.
No, this is completely redundant.
Okay, Mr. Dombrowski?
I think that having the data compared to prior years to see trends would be beneficial, so to that point, yes.
To Mr. Kramer's point, it's pretty apparent that schools across the nation are having a difficult time. So, I mean, you can speculate that, yes, probably everyone's having an increase in a lot of extreme behavior right now. I've got kids in school, yes, probably anyone with kids would determine that this year is uniquely difficult and extremely difficult for most students at this time. So to bring a conversation in regards to that, it would be a way, so no.
Okay, so you are a no. All right, all right, so there's not consensus for that, so we'll get the report as we normally would, and then it could possibly come back as a potential topic after we have an opportunity to review that. All righty, thank you. All right, that brings us to committee reports. And I'm going to start with NSSEO, and I will try to be brief. We had our last Board meeting with NSSEO, and we were, our shining stars were students that are in the visual impairment classes. We had three wonderful young people. Two of our young people were fourth graders, and then one was a third-grade student. If you didn't see them speaking to you and didn't know that, they were extremely eloquent. They talked about the skills and the concepts that they were learning along the way, the opportunities that they had, how they're working with their teachers, what they're doing to provide greater accessibility for those students and for visually impaired students, the curriculum. They're working towards independence and opportunities for inclusion. These were three marvelous young persons that presented to us. Julie Jellic, who is the business manager there at NSSEO, did provide us with information about the budget development process, and I will give it to Ms. Kason, and there's a summary sheet that she can forward on to you because I think it's good to know about their budget process and the involvement and how that evolves. Also, we had a presentation about the positive pathways for students with disabilities, and that's a drive of having community involvement, having legislators' part of it, and then the different superintendents and special ed people involved in it. They're addressing current and future needs of students with disabilities. They're looking at the finances from the state, hopefully increasing the amount of money that is given back to the schools for special needs because we know that that is, you know, extremely expensive. Also talked about addressing social-emotional learning and the behavior, and looking, another priority is enhancing the learning growth and innovative opportunities for all of the special needs students. So it was a really good presentation there and sharing of information. That's what I have on NSSEO. And next, it will be EdRed, Mr. Rosenblum.
Thank you. So EdRed had a meeting on December 3rd. Senator Ann Gillespie was the guest speaker. She spoke on several different things, including TIF bill, intergovernmental agreements, like the one that we passed at this Board table previously. In fact, she called out District 211 and 15 for that intergovernmental agreement. She spoke about PTAL, not penalizing for not taxing the levy to the max and allowing that going forward. She spoke on House Bill 2778, which is the COVID Employee Benefit and Wage Protection Bill, granting administrative, paid administrative leave retroactively to staff, and that is, that was put in place through executive order rather than through the legislators. She spoke that going forward, they're going to have legislative briefs available online, so when we get our EdRed updates, we'll have those, as well as they're going to have 30-minute calls to provide people updates verbally if they so choose to dial in. Legislative dinner scheduled for January 31st in person. They're going to have a virtual town hall that has been rescheduled to January with Senator Ram Vila Vilam, who also spoke at a recent EdRed dinner. And tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., for anybody here who's interested, they're having a meeting on TRS. They're welcoming Rich Frankenfeld from TRS to discuss new challenges related to pensions. So if you're available, that will be online virtually tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. That is my EdRed update.
Okay, thank you. The next is the Administrative Board Policy Group Report. I don't believe we have anything to add, Mr. Kramer?
I do. It was probably the quickest policy board group meeting ever. Mrs. Klemkowitz was not able to attend. We did it by phone.
Oh, I was there.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, I got there a few minutes afterwards.
I didn't know that. And it was over in five minutes. Essentially, the response to bullying is essentially a rewrite because of a change in state law, and as usual, Mr. Schumacher has dotted the i's and crossed the t's in the proposed changes. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Community and Family Services Report?
Yeah, we had a Zoom call focused on the group around Higgins. We had a lot of local representation there. Representative Musman and her staff members were there, along with Mr. Crespo, speaking about engaging and avoiding redundancy in services throughout the community and references. And towards the end of the meeting, it kind of just focused on rental assistance during COVID and attorneys that if renters are facing eviction, they can get support services, legal services from the Chicago area where they have connections to provide that. There was also some discussion about identity theft being utilized for benefit services as well. So that was the synopsis of the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot going on with the Illinois Rental Payment Plan, and that's, that went into effect December 6th, and it runs through January 9th. So the tenant can apply for it, and the landlord has to do their portion of it. So there's a good bit of money out there to help people who are in need. Thank you. All right, next is the Equity Report. I was not able to attend. Mr. Schumacher, if you can give us a brief update?
Absolutely. We had our last District 211 Equity Team meeting on Monday, November 29th, and we began the meeting with an update from the student representatives from each school team. And so we were able to hear in their words the things that they were discussing, the initiatives that they had already implemented this semester, and the work that they're planning for the upcoming second semester. After that, we had an opportunity together to review the B. Young Associates Equity and Cultural Audit Final Report as a team, and then we discussed the recommendations that were included in the audit.
What kind of sense are you getting from the students? Is it positive? Are they feeling good about it? Are they still kind of uncertain? Or what's the sense you're getting from the students?
Sure, so the sense we get as a team is that the students are excited about having a voice and about being able to be empowered to talk about the issues that they believe exist in their school, and then actually turn those discussions into action. And so while they're working with great staff members, one of the things that we're trying to do, both in the schools and then in our meetings, is to empower those students to speak out and to share their thoughts, and then to put those thoughts into actions.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Okay, I know it's getting late, so I'm going to start my three-day update, no, I'm just kidding, by saying that four of us went to the III Conference last month, four of us on the Board. There were also some school administrators that attended different portions of it. Real quick, all of us received, thank you to the Administration for copying and distributing copies of the handouts and presentation slides from those workshops that I attended. And so if you have any questions about them, please give me a shout, and I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. It was an excellent opportunity, as always, to network, to see that we're not here in our own little world, but part of a bigger, a big state. And I've got to tell you, I don't think there was any reduction in the number of attendees that attended this conference as in previous in-person conferences. It was very, very well-attended, as always. So, great sessions. You can go onto the IASB website if you want to see some reviews of the speakers and the programs and such. And at this point, I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues that were in attendance if they would like to make any comments on their experience or perspective.
I couldn't afford to take the Friday off work, and so I was really only there for the Saturday portion, but I found it to be very valuable. I had specific reasons for going down, and the workshop that I was most looking forward to was co-presented by Naperville School District, who you might remember from last year was the district who cut checks, declared a financial surplus and cut checks. And I really wanted to hear how that process went and was going. And so I was very excited to go to that presentation, and I was so excited that I kept them late and missed my next session, asking, peppering them with questions, but I found it to be very helpful. The community engagement session I attended was good, too. So I very much appreciated the individual workshops. My first time attending, I found it to be, those workshops, to be very beneficial. So I'm glad that I was able to attend.
Same, as a new Board member utilizing the Illinois State Board of Education online stuff has really helped me get acclimated to my role and my position here, and then actually getting to meet new people who are in the same row, newly-elected Board members, and kind of learning about the rural part of Illinois and how much, it's not, it's not all metropolitan. So it was, it was a lot. It was a lot, it was a great experience, and it's definitely helped me kind of just further my career.
Okay, thank you. I would add to that, the general session, the first general session, they had a gentleman, Mr. D., and he is, well, he used to teach 5th grade, now he's a kindergarten teacher. And when you talk about diversified education, this gentleman was just so energetic, so wonderful. You could just kind of see him, see him with the kindergarteners. And it was just so important of being able to relate to the kids and engaging them. And if you can engage those kindergarteners, the love of education, how that can grow. So he was, he was very good. The second general session, this gentleman was just the opposite. He was. He was, he was very eloquent. He was very professional. He was, you know, much calmer when he spoke. But he has a book that's called The Privileged Poor: How Elite Colleges Are Failing Disadvantaged His presentation, I think, was truly eye-opening because he talked about, we really need to get to know our kids and what do our kids need. He focused on that we've got, we've got great kids that are, that are minority students that can get into an elite college, but then what happens to them there? And suddenly you're with a different group of people. Your peers are different. They experience different things. And he spoke about how important it is to help prepare our students that we currently have, getting to know them, getting to support them, and getting to help them as they move on into college. Because there's so many great things that they can do and be able to, to really learn and go forward through it. So I, I was, I was really in awe with him. The one workshop, just real quick, it was Mental Health First Aid for Peers. And I will send out some information that I, that I have to, to my fellow board members here. But the school district has been doing it. They started doing it. And the importance of, you know, peers talk to peers first. So getting those kids to understand what's happening if somebody is depressed, if somebody is, has suicidal ideation, of getting that help for their peer. So there's a mental health first aid for teens. So that was, that was a really good presentation. And there were, you know, a couple of others that were very informative and, and good.
And I'd like to add on regarding general sessions. I stayed all the way up to the very, very end of the conference, and the third general session was on Sunday morning. And it was a woman who spoke about unconscious bias in every way, shape, and form, from, from raising your children to working with children to working with adults. I am a talent acquisition professional, and she has transitioned into being a talent acquisition professional because we deal with bias and unconscious bias every day in our jobs and the, and the people that we work with and the people that we help. So, so it was very, very informative, entertaining. She was able to give examples. She started out the presentation by showing slides of people, children and adults. Each one was for a brief moment. And then at the end, she said, you remember all the slides we showed you at the beginning? Do you know that the average recruiter looks at a resume for six seconds and makes a determination about the person in six seconds? That's how fast she was showing us pictures of all these different types of individuals. And as you were looking at them, she was encouraging you to make decisions and, and evaluate the people based on what you saw. So it was very, very eye-opening. And then I also want to mention that there was a delegate assembly that took place on Saturday morning, and I was our, our district's delegate to that. And if you have, if anybody on the live stream or here at the board table have any questions regarding the results of those resolutions, two things. One is you can go to the I A S B website, isb.org, and there's a link there where you could see what the voting results are. But I would be more than happy to have one-on-one discussions with anyone in our community that would like to, to discuss the resolutions and perhaps a little bit more insight as to how those decisions were made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That leads us to Student Wellness Report.
So, Mr. Gout, we'll handle this between the two of us, but, so I was really, I was really happy at the last meeting to have sat at a table with students from our Alternative Learning Academy. They were, it was absolutely fantastic to see them there and to talk to them about what they hope to see in their school in terms of student wellness. I really enjoyed their company. Students, the students that were speaking, and, you know, this being a student-driven process, were talking about initiatives that they are planning to improve their school culture and specifically their school pride. So they're thinking about extra, like, theme weeks. If you'll imagine often spirit weeks that occur before homecoming with different themed days, they want to do more things like that through the year rather than just at homecoming, et cetera, to build up school community and school pride. So they're talking about the different initiatives that they're coming up with at their various school teams. There was a very, very popular and engaging presentation about Title IX, which students in particular found really informative. It was great. And I believe that, that presentation is going to be repeated and filtered down now through school, the school-specific teams, too. There was also a brief presentation of the panorama results, speaking about, you know, that sense of belonging. So we talked about that, too. And I don't know if you want to add anything? Yep, for the, yeah, so that, there's the rundown.
Okay, thank you. All right, that leads us to the Strategic Plan Steering Committee Report. And we met on November, November 30th.
Oh, I apologize, Ms. Klenkowitz. I wanted to say, one of the things, one of the initiatives that students were talking about wanting to see in the future, very, very timely, was like a peer-to-peer counseling program.
Oh, perfect.
So, yeah, they expressed interest in exactly the sort of thing that you're discussing.
That would be good.
Yep.
Sorry. No, thank you. The Strategic Planning Steering Committee, there were about 30 people in attendance. It was a good cross-section of business people, parents, teachers. So it was, it was a good group of, of people and, and students. And they, they contributed at the meeting, which was, which was wonderful. Dr. Small and the gentleman, and I'm drawing a blank on his name right now.
Jason.
Jason. You know, facilitated it. The focus was to look at the process and the timeline. I know Mr. Kramer had asked about the timeline. The hope is, the goal is that the board approves the, the schedule for our June meeting. So there will be some presentations to us. There are some surveys that I have already begun online. You've gotten some information in regards to it. I think the positive on that, it asks specific questions, and it also welcomes suggestions. We looked at what the framework is, you know, taking a look at, eventually looking at our mission and vision, our core beliefs, priorities, and working it down the line that way. Dr. Small, is anything you'd like to add to it?
The next meeting will be on, on this blank.
Pardon me?
December 14th, 15th.
December 15th.
The survey closes on December 17th, so we continue to push that out. It was in the Daily Herald today on the front page of the neighborhood section. Thank you, Erin, for moving that forward. It's on social media. We have sent it to every parent, every student, every employee. And it's on our websites, as well as working through some of our professional business organizations throughout Schaumburg-Hoffman and the Palatine area. So we hope to get some good results on that.
And the theme was, spread the word. You know, there were, there were the parents that were there. Talk to your groups, talk to your neighbors, the people that you associate with, the, the different groups and everything, was to get it out so we can get the most information that we can from all of our community members, whether they have students in our schools or not, and all of our business people, and our seniors, getting feedback from all of these people. I was at this meeting. Mr. Kramer is going to join us on the steering committee, so it'll be.
Somebody else wants it.
I don't think they're beating the doors right now. So, all right. So that, that takes us then to, that takes us to our upcoming events, and you have that in front of you. All right. So then we do not have to go back into closed session. The next order of business is our retirement requests, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education accept the retirement request of Deborah Jackson, effective May 2022, according to the Master Contract of District 211 United Support Staff; Violetta McAllister, previously approved by the Board of Education on January 16th, 2020, effective December 2021, instead of December 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group; Rhonda Polley, previously approved by the Board of Education on April 29th, 2021, effective June 2022, instead of December 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff; Raymond Rasmussen, previously approved by the Board of Education on July 15th, 2021, effective December 2021, instead of June 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group; Kimberly Schuman, effective May 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff; and Ellen Stauber, effective May 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klenkowitz?
Aye. Okay, and then the next item is, the recommended action is that the effective, that effectively, July 1st, 2022, Hamid Mary Ascoe be appointed as Athletic Director at William Framed High School at a gross salary of $148,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klenkowitz?
Aye. And at this time, the Board President declares the meeting of the Board of Education adjourned.